Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission for November 3rd, 2022. Before we begin, our planner, Ms. Jersey, would like to make an announcement. The Randek Decker subdivision items and Decker subdivision, the applicant has asked for further postponement and granted the, an extension to do so. And usually, where we know something won't be first. I'd like to announce that it's beginning and that at this time of the hearing that it's coming along.
Okay, so, so item A, item A other public hearings?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it was for a re-subdivision of Tommy, for Tommy Kokomo, Kokomo Rose, from two lots at 44 Randek or Lane. And the property is owned by Kokomo, the second LLC, it's being postponed. So that will not be a public hearing tonight. So if you're here for that item, you don't have to stay, you can go home. Look at you. Okay. All right. Well, no takers. All right. I thought, I thought for sure the room would empty out. Silly me. All right. I'm gonna ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Going right into the agenda now, because we have a quick one and lots of excitement ahead, I'm sure. Review of the minutes, September 22nd, which was a special meeting for planning and zoning. Now, we all had a chance to review the minutes. Do we have any corrections or do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 22nd. Ms. Jersey has a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. October 6th, 2022, which was the regular meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those minutes? Are there any adjustments or corrections at this time? Make a motion to approve the minutes that's presented. Okay, motion by Ms. Jersey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Rogan. Boy, I was hanging in the balance there. All righty, motion by, a second by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Going on to the schedule of the public hearings. We have the site plan, special permit, application of Super Rock Car. Now got the owning car, AIA NSN Architect LLC for interior renovations of the existing unoccupied 1,777 square foot space for a takeout food facility, no exterior renovations at block 12, 6th, lot 7791, 225 Berlin Turnpike. Now, the suggested date is gonna be the 17th of November. I'm not sure how scheduled, how hectic our schedule's gonna be on the 17th. Is there any way we can try to start to feather some of the stuff out? Because everything seems to be clogging up.
So this was scheduled for this evening, and there was a notice error. It is a use, and then it's just a special permit issued in the existing Plaza. So we have a relatively pretty short item. Of course, we don't wanna make any assumptions about any items, but it has the potential to be not very long. Of course, we then do have the, let me just double check the date issue.
Okay.
Make sure that it's not been in the system.
That's okay.
I'll check that. One second. Take your time.
Can we hear some more? Okay.
So you do have plenty of time to postpone that public hearing.
Okay, so we can actually go ahead and make a kicking offer till the beginning of December?
Okay, see, I just look at the date on the motion, and yeah, you do already have some public hearings continuing to there. On there, but I think that's fine, that's fine.
What is that date?
December 1st.
I'll make a motion to reschedule the public hearing for Thursday, December 1st. Okay, we have the motion due by Ms. Jersey, second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion on the side, then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Onto the new business. This is the site plan application for the H2O Farm Berlin LLC for the construction of two greenhouses at 2107 Chamberlain Highway. I know this is under new business, Maureen, and I've had a lot of communications that we, I believe that we have received here at the town hall. And I think I would like to address the attorney, Mr. March, I have his name right, Manchine. Is Mr. Marchine here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just because, and you know, come on now, we'll have a talk. Just because this is, this is, this is a review for us. However, because we've had so much public input and, and people reaching out to us to wanna communicate, share thoughts with us, and we can't do it without a public hearing. And also because we have, we have a turnover within the commission. So I was wondering if it's possible for you to allow us to entertain a motion or allow us to set it for public hearing so that we can start fresh, the newer commissioners can take part in the review and understand the whole basis of the public hearing and taking in public input and how it affects an application. So I really want to send this to public hearing, and I'm just asking you for your blessing, should I say.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind me just talking with my client for a minute?
Yes, that's okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes. And while we're waiting for that, my vice chair just reminded me that Steve Biella, who is an alternate for this commission, is as zoomed in. I understand he has some kids at home that are not feeling so well, so he's sort of holding down the fort there. So Steve, I just want to confirm that you are seated this evening for Scott Hamel, who has a seat on the commission, who's recently resigned.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And now, we go through the, that's another set out. Yes, go right ahead. No, that's all right, I'm speeding around the law, it's the coffee.
So, June Bailey. Zigma.
Here.
And Joycey.
Here.
John Beely.
Here.
Brendan Rogan.
Here.
Tom Miller.
Here.
And Nikki is.
Nikki has asked the excuse, and with my.
Is her like nanny? Is absent. Okay.
So, and Steve Biella, I'm sorry, Steve did just confirm he was on, so I already have that.
And just your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you. Brad Manchin, love is Brad Manchin, 21 tracks.
Okay.
Vice chairman chair, we did confer with my client, we, we do wanna note for the record that there was substantial public input at the text amendment process when the text amendment allowing greenhouses in this DOD district was asked by this commission. Most of the, or all of the comments that we have seen today, I know that there were more that were seen today that may have. All the comments that we've received today raised issues that were raised by the text amendment. I know that if you go to public hearing, you're not taking testimony today from me. But I do wanna, you know, and we don't, we're not gonna object to a public hearing. But it should be noted that all of the comments that we've seen today have been addressed by this commission through the text amendment. Therefore, we don't see the need for a public hearing, but if the commission would like, at least there should be a public hearing. That's, that's the commission's right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, I'll just do a struggle, because maybe I'm alone in my thought process, but would you like to see the side of?
Yes, you should take an official vote. Oh, once you decide, yeah, I mean, you can kind of have a discussion, but it should be a vote.
Okay. All right. So, any thoughts on that?
I would, I would like to have a public hearing. I'm a new member here. This was back a year ago. I didn't even see the videos or anything, or from the last meeting. So to give me full understanding of what this project is and the size of it, I would prefer to have a public hearing to give me that options and opportunity to understand the entire project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? And I too, and newer, coming on at the same time, and I agree that that would be very helpful. All right, thoughts? All right, thank you. Mr. Biella, let me go back to you online. Mr. Biella, Steve?
Trying to get it on mute. Can you hear me now?
Um, no, I, I can't. We're taking a call as to whether or not to move the item forward to a public hearing?
Yeah, I agree with everybody else.
And to my veteran, first person, Susan, how about you, Tim?
I do not have any problem. I don't feel public hearing. So, the attorney said is correct during the zoning application of amendment. We did have public speaking here, and all concerns of the public at that time were addressed. And most of the items that I have read so far were addressed to. But again, I always invite the public to come to our meetings, express their opinions. Site plan does not need public hearing. But with the letters that we have in concern of other staff and, and commissions, I'd like to hear them for that, and the other staff and commissions. So that would have to come through the public hearing, so.
Okay.
Some public hearing at this time.
Okay. I, I do agree also that many of the points that have been made in the correspondence that we've received were raised also at the time that the zoning text amendment was heard. I also, though, am a big believer in the transparency of the work that this commission does. And I, for that reason alone, I think people should have the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
I agree with Commissioner Sipon, Commissioner George Jersey, same file, learn to put truth. It's okay for a public hearing.
Okay. All right, so I think we have the consensus of the commission that this will move forward to a public hearing arena. So we will not be hearing anything tonight on the side of, and so. What?
Person vote.
A little bit, well, then go ahead.
I'm trying, I'm trying to streamline your process, you know, with your guys.
I will make that motion. I'll make a motion to schedule the H2O Farm application for a public hearing.
Okay.
And a date suggested by staff.
This was in your packet, suggested that if you went over the public hearing for December 1st. If, I'll explain that just a bit. People may be wondering why not the next meeting. We have to treat the notice requirements of the newspaper as we would a public hearing. And therefore, in order to meet the deadline for the newspaper and the requirements for the number of days before the public hearing for it to be in the paper, we don't have time to do that before November meeting. Yeah, and so December 1st is the next opportunity. In addition to that, the, and I just wanna call to your attention before you finalize your decision, that it is still treated as a site plan application, a site plan application that has a public hearing. So therefore, you're following the statutory timeline for deciding a a site plan, which is 65 days from official receipt date, so that would be December 9th. So it would be, unless an extension is ready by the applicant, of course, there is extension time, but that's your 65 days.
You just said December 1st.
So December 1st or meets within that.
Okay, because the next meeting is December 3rd.
No. So, November, December 1st is the meeting. Today's November 3rd, the next meeting is November 17th, and then the third meeting is December 1st.
Looking at it now. Okay, so I'll clarify my motion to schedule the H2O Farm application for public hearing on Thursday, December 1st. Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Jersey, the second by Mr. Zigma. Do we have further discussion on the item? Okay, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So move. Okay, December 1st, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see everybody who's interested in this item, December 1st. So we'll give everyone one second to clear the room.
We did clear the room.
I, I was kissing. Have a good Thanksgiving, guys. For those folks who are online, just wanna let you know that if you were there, still listening for the H2O Farm application for Chamberlain Highway, that is not going to a public hearing, the public hearing will be on the 1st of December. We will hear nothing more about that issue tonight. Okay, thank you.
You might wanna comment, you know, just reiterate about Randekers. And we have, and we have.
And also Randekers, Randekers project, which was an item under a public hearing, item B, which was a re-subdivision of Tommy Kokomo for the Randekers Lane, that has been postponed as well. And that's coming up once.
We're just moving to this point.
We're just moving to the side of the.
Next meeting.
Yeah, that's been moved to the second chance. Just so that I can help here.
That's automatically granted for some postponed.
Okay, so now we're gonna go into the public hearings. Did you have a call for this one or no?
I don't think.
The call was already read at the last.
Okay, I didn't know if there was anything else.
Okay, it is open. It was a reminder that it was open. It was September 1st. It heard on October 6th, and again on October 20th.
Okay, I just didn't wanna make sure there was nothing else in here that was new. I know, I know. He's good. Everyone, everyone, just settle down, settle down, you know, folks. Okay, public hearing, item A, special permit site plan application, Little House Living LLC for plant residential and field development related site improvements at 1676 Berlin Turnpike, MBL 22-1-114-10 in the BT1 zone. This was opened on the 1st of September, 6th of October, 20th October, and here we are. And Mr. Snow, right? Okay, there you go. Jeez, I've learned your names incredibly. All right.
I know, I know. Can I make one more comment just to remind anyone and everyone that speaks into one of these microphones, just me and please.
Okay.
Recording to the people online that is able to hear unless you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, nice work.
Get the outside.
Oh, we got the rain smell. Okay, so you guys keep one down. It's challenged tonight with the maps.
Someone wanted to go through.
Yeah, I know.
Do we look in the safety?
C2 of 10, what I have up here at work? I don't know if that's the right one. Yeah, okay. We're on page C2 of 10, Mr. Snow. So I think that's where we're supposed to be. Okay.
I'll start with a general, you know, kind of a recap on where we are and what we've done, and I'll leave that for Mr. Cassidy.
Okay.
All right, but for the record, my name is Patrick Snow. I'm a managing member of Little House LLC. I wanna thank the commission members and also the public for this process. We've been through this as a brief history. I started this process with 20 units, 20 single family units. But the buffers were not exactly what the neighbors and some of the surrounding businesses had hoped for. So the process evolved down to some different style of units, including some single families, but we kept the buffers as max as we can, to 45 feet on one side. We increased to the southerly, it's 24, 25 feet, which is what some of the neighbors have come out and then requested. We've also had an increase in, not increase, but a desire to save the back property on the trees, as we mentioned before, along with the fence along, along the property line for buffering from the neighbors. These were additional expenses and losing of units with really no savings and expenses. So I just wanted to put that out there for, for the commission. We're trying to work with the neighbors as best as possible, but at some point, you have to look at the whole economics of the projects. I believe that this project will be benefits to the town. We've taken out motels, a motel, it's been a desire of the Berlin Town Planning. Town plan, we're gonna try to replace, we are replacing it with some, some single fam, so single and duplex residences. So with Mr. Cassidy walking through the plan, that's gonna finalize.
For the record, my name is Joe Cassidy, professional engineer, principal of the permanent housing, here's to Cassidy, located at 630 Main Street in Cornwall. Last month, or two weeks ago, for you, we heard concerns, we heard the neighbors' concerns. Number one, about trying to reduce the overall number of units. So we heard the commission's concerned, neighbors' concerns about the number of units, and also on the southerly property line, the one unit, the duplex unit, which at the bottom, was at the bottom left, the quarter of the page, was only 20, 20 or 20 feet from that line that drives back to the north. We went back, we tried to shake up the plan a little bit more. We were able to delete or to eliminate the duplex that's at the far bottom left corner on the page you see. We're proposing to put a driveway with a turnaround, a handrail turnaround there, and turn, we add a backbone, single unit. So at this point, that unit is a minimum of 47 feet, 46 and a half feet from the Westley or the back property line. And addition to the southerly property line, it's at least 27 feet away from that property. So it meets, everyone was trying to detract the boat, being at least 25 feet from that southerly property to accomplish. We initially talked at the last day about the center island. We propose to put a community building in that area. We'd like to kind of consider that, say, we lost steam and replace the app with a single family unit. But you'll see a rectangular extension on the bottom, on the south end of it. That would be proposed to be an additional garage bay, that would be a area that we can store maintenance equipment for the overall development. So in this plan, we are at 18 units at this point. So as Mr. Snow mentioned, we're down to a smaller, which I proposed. All the other amenities, such as dog park area, and then there was also a space here that could use as a community garden or a playfield of that upper left-hand corner of the site. This is the northwest corner, it would still be light, drainage, the detention system, all the utility work, because they were originally posed. Can you flip one more slide, one more page? The other question that came up was dealing with phasing of the project. So basically, what we're proposing to do is we would do all the infrastructure work first, build roadways, utilities, drainage, we're all getting constructed first. So basically, you can see it right, we can be struck first. Units would be broken down into three phases, the yellow on the north end and the center, I'll wait to phase one. So this allows the zoning department to know which units we completed prior to making the grid seal. The orange units on the left, that would be phase number two, and then the final red ones on the south at the bottom, it'd be phase three. So basically, we're working around the circle with the construction of the units. All the features that we had mentioned, the landscaping on the Westley side, the six-foot high fence, it also continues down on the south side. We're all still, like, still willing to do those. The only other question, one more slide. There was also questions about stowaway areas. If you can see around the perimeter of all roads, that indicates where we get a comedy six-foot high stakes around the entire perimeter. So it's been too typical to a residential coverage with traffic, but there's a lot of area of thanks now around the entire perimeter, to say. So the other is gonna be more than that area for storage on the site. So, one more slide. Back, go forward. So the only other comment I'll bring up, because of the changes we made to the plan, is we did receive staff comments. In the staff comments, on the initial memo that went out, it seemed that there's a lengthy status of staff confidence, they came from the government. They don't have comments, we're actually dated July, so we actually did those, so. We did, I did talk to your time, your time, your mic heard. I think he had actually put in the updated plans. He did provide an email updating those comments, because the majority of comments that you had from July 17th, that all port address. So basically, if you see the memo and all comments, it cut down to about a quarter. There are some outstanding ones, very minor nature. The only one that I had to be great concern about initially, that's research and we're able to address it, is the way sewers go out of this property. Presently, there's a sewer ladder that goes out the left side or the west side of this property, it actually ties to the manhole and hollow corner. There is a question as to whether it's actually easement associated with it. We had not done the original survey, but we have to back research the records. We found out that there actually is 25 foot utilities. So that question is addressed, that was a great concern. All the other items dealt with adding some additional details, for like trenching for the rain acres, and some vertical elevations to clean up some of the rain acres, and then additional, I think it's worse, seven controls, such as temporary stockpiles, seven traps. That is something that the plan, the Brooklyn Town staff, on education, so they address, if the commission so desires, the students to go forward and take care of that. Again, I apologize for not being able to get to them. I guess it was the first time I've resolved. So, you know, we did have us to try to adjust everything I thought it was major, that we needed to deal with in a short time frame. So with that, my personal presentation, and I'm glad to answer your questions, may I?
Still public hearing too. So can I just, yeah, comment to the established point? So we, so I do have a copy of the survey map that our engineering department took some time to, to locate that shows the easement, which is not on the existing conditions plan that was held by the survey originally. They felt on the ground, the line was there. So we did find the map dated from 1975, and engineering divided it to me saying, you know, satisfied with, with that. Also, the. Also, the, I just want to clarify that the engineer got the comments in, because I cut, pasted them into my report. We don't know what happened with the email that should have gone to them. But we, we, we can't figure that out. Looking for where the breakdown was. And so we wanted to humbly apologize for that because. I, we just don't know where it can, where, what ended up happening. Because, and so Mike had said to me yesterday, you know, earlier, I said, you know, I do, most of these give me solve these modified plans. And he said, he did yell that the, I don't want to speak for him. I tried to suggest to close the public hearing and just get confirmation from staff that they could be. Their design details that, that are easily and typically can be rectified prior to permitting. So as far as the, he had a list of the kinds of things that he would typically see and have addressed. But again, I don't want to speak for that conversation. And I think I'd be more comfortable if, should you decide to close the hearing. That, that, you know, that'd be best staff a question to make sure that that's correct and he can. To the best of my knowledge, answer that question, even though we're out of public.
Yeah, okay, terrific. And Maureen, can I just ask you, because the easement that you said was on the property, it goes down to, can you just point it out where it is on the, maybe on that map as well?
I think back to one of the other plans probably.
Okay, I just want to say.
So it's just, yeah, so if you go to the existing, if you, they've opened up the file, it says.
So right, okay, right. Here is the westerly line of their site. Here's the dotted line is the sewer line. And what we found on town clerk's map for 47 is that that line actually does have a 25 foot. Easement around it. The line.
The, the plan was 75, it's actually kind of interesting, was a 75. That was actually a piece of, in the back, so it's just, we went back and plotted it. Made the property part of 48, contained an easement 25 foot width for utility purposes over that. So that's the substance of trying to look at, 76 plan updated that.
Okay, this, this. This plan is actually labeled as a utility easement plan, which I think will also, unless there was one we found superseded it. That this would be the purpose of the easement. I want to clarify this, and I'm not aware, but clarify this for the record, is the purpose of the easement is stated on this filed map as a utility easement. Not as a blanket easement and access easement, you know, giving, not for other purposes. The purpose of the easement is utilities. We did, I, we call the, there was some concern with right to pass on that easement. And I, this is what we found. And this is trust of justice. And it is part of the file now. And we have the deeds that go with it. I just got those today, so I haven't read through them, but engineering did.
Okay, so utilities.
Maybe this information.
So for clarity, utilities encompasses everything.
Um, well, right now, it also has a water line through it.
So it's water, sewer, electric, water.
We have to look at the specific language. They are not proposing any of those.
There's a sewer lateral through it right now. It's an existing sewer lateral through it. That's why I think we're going to have.
Oh. There's a water line going through it according to the map.
So volume, book 191, page 158. Look, that page is entitled easement for water and sanitary sewer. And it's dated 1976. So the map is 75, but maybe the filing date was actually the 76 date with this. And it's, so that's for 48 Holly Court. And it says easement for water and sanitary sewer. Again, I haven't read the whole document, but it's what it is, how it's titled.
Well, there is a question about, it also says overhead cable line coming across the property, which is outside of the easement. And if that cable is a leather cable, then that shouldn't be put underground. I already probably get to the utility.
That was, that was servicing one of the original motel buildings on, that's not going to be here anymore. Utilities are coming early relative to the sewer.
Okay, so, so that, that orange should be eliminated if, if it's there.
We are in public hearing, so I'll go to, I'll go straight ahead to the public. Is there anyone who wants to address the commission regarding this application? That would be the time to speak.
Hi there, everybody. It feels like this is what I do on Thursday evenings. What is it better than what's on TV? There we are.
Yes.
Let me just read this to you all, make it short and sweet.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Peter Riley, and I am from Westbury, Peter Carly Row here in Berlin. Hopefully this evening, we're in a place of positive resolution for all concerned parties of this proposed development. As taxpaying neighbors were collectively requesting an eight foot fence. Now in the past, requested eight foot, it still keeps, I hear the figure of six feet rather than eight. And we have requested this for all three sides of the proposal. Along with that, decreasing the number of homes from lesser to, from 18 to a lesser number. And this originally, as Mr. Snow said, was originally started with 18 and brought down with a 20 rather than brought down to 18. But still an awful lot of house on a little bit of land. Further, requesting doing away with the duplex in the center and putting in, in its place a gazebo. Sadly, developer Mr. Snow has not met any of these requests. The center space for a dog park should not have precedent over people needing a bit of space to stretch their legs and visit with one another. Plus, we've got our dog park really nice, by the way, right around the corner. And I don't know if any of you have been there, I have, it's very nice. Anyhow, open space with a gazebo only would fit the builder nicely. Would also dress up the look of the development, giving it a nice classy finishing touch and a feeling of more space. You know, you would have the, the units around, around the side and the center. So it would be a much more pleasant look and beneficial, I think, for the people that would live there. And also for kids, I mean, kids are important. They got to hold around somewhere, and that is tight. So anyhow, hopefully the P and C board, along with Mr. Snow, will look favorably upon these requests in the interest of the neighbors, the development, and town of Berlin. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
At the October 20th, 2022 zoning, oh, I should keep my name.
Name and address, please.
All Strand 48 Holly Court. At the October 20, 2022 zoning commission meeting, 1676 Berlin Trendpike developer was asked to remove the duplex from the drive at the southern boundary and remove the management office slash community center from the circle. The commission talked about a reduction to the proposed high density 18 units and wanting more open space. Latest site plan, remove the duplex, but they added a single unit at the southwest boundary. Left the building in the circle and officially renamed it a housing unit. Additional parking was reduced from nine spaces to six. The six foot vinyl fence is still noting that even though a stocky fence was a better choice. What happened to additional space? Why is a dog, why is there a dog park and not a playground? The new single unit number 13 is now in a direct line of sight to my house. Since the plans keep changing, we don't know if the same units with their heights of 32 to 36 feet will be changing. 22 to 26 and a half feet will be changing. Unit 13 will look down on me from a height of 32 to 36 and a half feet with the added incline from our street of the 10 feet. The project roadway is, can you, can you show us by any chance this one sheet?
We're trying to pull up a sheet.
Yeah, that, that one right there, the one before, either one is fine. So. The roadway extends past unit 13 that the south.
Hold on, we got to share with her how the link is not quite done yet. There we go.
Okay, so the roadway extends past unit 13. Our concern is that that's a great place for pile snow. Come down to, you know, down to the end of the, to the end of the boundary, go to the side of unit 13 and go behind unit 14. Since there, you know, there's no drainage there whatsoever. So the concern is that, you know, the water is going to pour down. The 10 foot decline end up in my lower level and could end up next door at number 38 Holly and come down on the side where the storage units are for Berlin Auto. So we're very concerned about that. It's just, it's too good to be true, that area. So we would like a written guarantee that snow will not be stocked out there. We still have major concerns about the subsurface infiltration system failing with major storm events or 100 year storm that could damage and flood 51 Holly. There is a 10 foot drop in elevation. Stormwater could barrel out of the culvert and stream and flood a budding Holly Court basements. We request that either the town or developer guarantee in writing that those homes will not be flooded or damaged. We are again asking for a personalized written letter to all Holly Court property owners that there will never be an entrance or exit into 1676 from the end of our cul-de-sac. This would destroy us since the traffic study cites over 200 trips a day from that project. We are again requesting an eight foot stocking fence on all three sides. This is for our safety and our security and to lower the visual impact of the two story units. It's a lot harder to climb an eight foot fence than a six foot. Commission can certainly give a variance for an eight foot fence. We are again asking for an impact analysis. We again asked that the letter to this commission from the Berlin Economic Commission dated March 10th, 2022, stating their concerns about the text amendment be addressed. I, and I do know that, that easement is on my property. I know about it, it's not an issue. But so one of my questions was, what was, what else might be coming through there? So it sounds like the sewer. We don't know at this point if the sewer is going to come down to the middle of the cul-de-sac from up there. But I am aware of the easement. This high density project will overcrow the land, ruin our sense of community and well-being and devalue our properties. We still think the highest and best use of this parcel is to keep it commercially zoned. We wish the commission would deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Patty Virtue, 27, Holly Court. Once again, I agree with you with the same concerns at the 1020 meeting. More of what was supposed to be in harmony with existing neighbors seems to have gone out the window. Under the revised plan, it's showing mainly duplexes. There aren't any duplexes in our neighborhood or the surrounding neighborhoods. So how is that in harmony with its surroundings? Why is this plan even being considered at this point? It's, the lot is still too small for what builders trying to do. And it's obvious that it's being crammed into that space, no matter how you rework it. And again, I will say that for the last 11 plus months, we have stressed with these issues and constant worries as the destiny of our neighborhood and homes around this proposed development are in the hands of planning and zoning. Our property values, our safety and our property's safety hangs in the balance. Based on what's been happening with storms these days, how do we trust the drainage system will hold up? We are asking once again for a guarantee for the town or the builder that the property, our properties will not flood and shouldn't flood. Someone other than the homeowner will take responsibility for it. I have not been able to get anyone to speak to this. I have said it at every meeting, including inlands and wetlands and planning and zoning. I'm kind of upset that nobody has addressed it. You would think that if the town, if the builder are confident that it would hold off, that they wouldn't mind putting that in writing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, this is Zdowski, owner of Berlin, also owning the property. I've been here quite a few times already.
Yes.
Get tired. Sorry, this is the plan from what we had last two weeks ago. There are several dwellings there, now we got duplexes. And I just got here with this like the other day. Just looking at it, the one on the, number 13, I believe it is, is, it's still kind of close. The drainage there, there's no drainage. And that's going to be impacting my storage units. Because my storage units are like maybe eight feet below that grade. Just looking at them quickly, the fence in the area, looks like you fenced in the pine trees on my side. So it dispenses on, those are his pine trees. His fence is going to be on the inside of those pine trees, leaving me to do all the maintenance on those trees. I don't want to do that. That's the case, kind of all down. I'm being opposed to this project, there's just too many dwellings here. We had a nice plan last week or two weeks ago, looked pretty good. Couple of things changed. The inside unit there became all of a sudden residential this week. Parking, I don't throw these people in there, it's just way too much. You're going to be right next to a body shop, it's virtually a piece of property, what a waste, the residential. Sorry, I implore you to deny this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have a member who's joining virtually, who has their hand raised, would like to speak.
Okay, alrighty. Yes, alrighty, so we have.
Hi, how are you? Sorry, I couldn't be there. Sheri Rice, 38, Holly Court. I did come into the meeting when I, the engineer was, and Maureen had the map up for the utility and the easement. I'm a little concerned about that. If you maybe could explain. Um, I'm a little concerned about that. If you maybe could explain to me a little bit more what, what the purpose of, of showing that was, is that potential where, because I believe at one of the last meetings, they talked about the water not coming onto Holly, the line not coming from Holly Court anymore, that they were gonna go on to the turnpike to get their water.
Okay, so she's questioning about, um, the easement?
Yeah, the easement map that they put up and, um, because that was the first time I was seeing that, was there something specific as to why that map was coming up? And has the plan changed that the water will not be coming from Holly Court and will be coming from Holly Court and not the turnpike like previous plans had said?
Well, from my standpoint, as far as staff analysis goes, um, the and, and engineering standpoint, the extent of the easement was not shown on the, um, site plan. And that's something that would typically be shown on the site plan because we want to know that the right to use that area for any reason or whether they are there or not, you know. You wanna know what the property has.
Yeah.
And that is a right that this property has based on the unit from, that was filed, that was found by the land record from the mid-seventies. So it was a, um, search of waters allowed. As far as how the applicant intends to use their rights to that, I think that's better. Responded to by the applicant and they should provide that information about what we found. What was found in researching the record, uh, the, the land records was a right to have the sewer and water through an easement to this property.
Okay. And do you want to address that or the, uh?
Can you just, um, backtalk a little and have her repeat her name and address for our friends when she does the minutes?
Yeah, okay. Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Okay, because you're pretty faint on our, on our end, can you please state your name and address again for our records?
Sure. It's Sheri Rice, thirty-eight Holly Court.
Seventy-eight Holly?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
I guess my hair is a little shot. Anyway, um, so.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, clarify.
Today, there's a six-inch sewer line in that, right away with our, um, that's all we're using. There's a water line, there's a water service line in the easement. We are not using the water line. Water for this development is brought in off the Berlin Turnpike. The only thing that is being used for is the sewer line, not access, no other utilities, just the sewer line.
And Ms. Rice, Ms. Rice, did that answer your question?
Yes, so but does that mean that they would, is there's still going, is that gonna be developed for the sewer line or is it the existing sewer line that's there now?
We upgrading sewer line. It's an old, it's an old system, sewer lines will be upgraded, we'll upgrade the sewer line, that's it.
They would have to upgrade the sewer line.
So is that sewer line, is that sewer line gonna be upgraded and taking twenty-five feet in either direction of trees and what's there now?
No, it's a twenty-five-foot easement that allows them to do the work that's needed to upgrade the sewer line. Go ahead.
Right, Ms. Rice is asking, how is the upgrade going to be done? Are you gonna take it on, cut down trees or?
Correct, yep.
A sewer line is gonna consist of about a six-foot wide trench. I will decide your spoils. Once the new sewer line is put in, it's back built and restored to light condition.
Okay. I hope you heard that, Ms. Rice.
I heard six feet trench.
The sewer trench is about six feet wide.
The sewer trench is about six foot wide.
We're not clearing the whole twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot wide area.
Yeah.
The reason you have twenty-five-foot wide area is if you had water, if you had sewer, it's typically a ten-foot separation between the two. So you need the extra area, we're not doing water in this area, no other utilities, and this area is just a sewer line.
Okay, and your water's gonna come off the turnpike. Okay, hopefully that addressed your question.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, okay, ma'am, sorry.
At least it's early tonight, it's not ten o'clock. I mean, James, uh, I live at fifty-one Holly Court, now, I've been there over forty, I'll say over forty-five years. I'm not gonna tell my age, but I agree with what Littner had to say in reference to, uh, what she, I know she had, I didn't wanna give her to repeat the same thing, but I do agree with all the ladies that are on our, on our side on Holly Court. But I just like to say, even though when we talking about, well, I'm at fifty-one and all those trees are massive, they were put there by the John Forrest, the one man that owned those motels before. They're not mine. And if you put a fence up, I hope you put the fence, so the trees in your, your property, those are not my trees. I didn't put those trees there. All the trees on the side, John Forrest put those trees there. Not, not forty, not fifty-one Holly Court, we didn't, we didn't put any trees there, I've been trying to cut down those ones I have. But, you know, it's just like you say, you know, we wanna keep it home. They said, you know, they say affordable housing, when you look at that, I don't think it's affordable housing. And if everybody, anybody that live in Berlin, I won't say it. All the young people leave, they go to school and they leave, what's left in Berlin? The old folks. The young people are not here anymore, they, they leave. So, you know, if you afford a housing, gotta be affordable housing. Don't say you gonna do affordable housing and you only have three or four of this. You gotta look at transportation too. Everybody don't have a car. We don't have bus service out here. So that's, that, to me, that's not a plus. And I, I don't think they should be put there anyway. It's not a good area. I hope you will decline because that's not, and the Berlin Turnpike now is real bad. Traffic is terrible. I wouldn't wanna live there because I, when I leave my house, I don't go to the Berlin Turnpike. I go the opposite way because you can't get out. That traffic is heavy, it pick up more. So that's not a good place for people to live to have kids. I'm sorry, that's not a good place at all. But I hope, like y'all, like Littner say, you look at it, I don't wanna cut nobody's throat, you know, but I think it's living there a long time and I know. And like I say, most people that live out here in Berlin are seniors. All the young people move out. And you gonna do affordable housing, they gotta get to it. If they get the housing with things on there, they don't have a car, there's no bus transportation enough. So I hope it's easy coming.
Thank you.
I wanna sell that, but, you know, you just came to me to say it. And as long as we get out of here, we go ten o'clock.
That's Quinta. All right. Can I ask a question? Uh, yes, as long as, you're still in public hearing, so as long as you use the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I understand that you're gonna replace the sewer, Pedro Riley.
Yes.
Under Peter Harley Row.
Thank you. All right.
I'm back. I'm understanding you're replacing the sewer line that's coming down and that will go on to Holly Court. Now, the sewer line that is in Holly Court presently is just taking care of a certain number of homes. Am I correct? And the pipe that comes off of that, how is that gonna be affected? Because you're, you're gonna have, if your proposal goes through eighteen homes and that drainage going down that pipe, what does that run into? What does that mean? Can that take that pressure of that? I, I just don't understand how that works. And I don't know how old that pipe is in there. I know that you've gotta replace the one that's in there. You've got it, it's old. And, but I don't know what, what goes beyond that. You, you just don't wanna, that could be erosion of worms.
Okay, so.
Just figuring it out.
So just, just so you keep the conversation through the commission.
Okay.
No, 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 definitely sorry, excuse me.
Okay, undone, that was it.
Okay, so your question is, even though an upgrade to the pipe is being proposed.
What's it hooking up?
What's it, whatever, whatever portion of pipe it's hooking up to.
Hook up to something. Can that pipe take it or does that have to be replaced as well?
I was just pre-stating.
You stated better than I did.
That's all right. And you're just worried about the, the flow and the pipe, is it gonna be able, the existing pipe from Holly Court be able to take the additional homes?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I know, I think, well, I have no problems. Anything else? That's it, that's it. All right. I'm going back online to see if there's anyone who would like to address the question. I think we have a Sonia Ursho. Is that correct? Urs, Ursioli.
It's Ursioli.
Okay.
Sorry.
We can barely hear you, so please speak up a little bit and please state your name and record, uh, make an address for the record and then we'll be happy to hear your comments. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
All right. My name is Sonia Ursioli, seventeen Holly Court. Um, I just have a couple of comments. I just, I'm a little concerned about the easement. Um, I know it's for utility base, but I'm concerned that down the line, the town will eventually, if a motion is put into place by an attorney or it's brought to court, the town will change it from utility base to an easement to make it safer for the people who live up in that complex. I would really like something in writing from the town to reassure that that won't happen. As well as, um, now they're using the sewer in the easement on Holly Court. That was never stated before, so once again, that has changed. So I'm a little concerned as this goes on, what else is gonna change, little bits and pieces to make it back to the old drawing board that it used to be? And then we're basically, you know, stuck with it because, I mean, to me, this is the first time that that's brought up, so I, I.
If I understand your concern, and again, I apologize, but I'm just, I'm stretching to try to, to hear your statement. Uh, but I think that your concern is regarding the easement and that right now it's utility, but you're concerned in the future, it may be, uh, decided that the easement should be used for something else, like a back way out of that complex. Is that correct?
That is correct. And also now they're using the sewer on Holly Court. That was never stated before because apparently their drainage system was so amazing and can handle everything. And, or storm drainage, sorry. And now they have to use it on Holly Court. So what else are they gonna change? Six months, eight months, two years down the road? Um, it, it, I just don't trust this at all.
Okay, that is, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, Sonia, is there a way for you to turn up the volume on your end?
My volume's all the way up. Can you hear me now?
Okay, all right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, you're faint, but if we, if we just all, you know, uh, listen close, I, I can pick up, uh, what you're saying. But I, I think it was for the public record and for the minutes of the meeting that we had a concern, uh, that your issues be recorded or, and reported. So. Can you say something now? Let's see if we adjust, we made some adjustment at our end?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now it's a little bit better, a lot better.
We're using that speaker. Now, we're using that television for the volume instead of that one I keep now.
Okay, all right.
So it might get louder.
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you. My meeting rooms.
Yeah, I know, contemplating rooms, lots of options, I'm doing. Oh, okay, clock setting is always canceled. I wish it's canceled if I were you. toggle over and hit cancel.
All right.
Is there an arrow button? I go, yep, 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 okay. Oh, Netflix, let's see what's on. All right, did we lose everybody? All right, so we, we still have you, Sonia, right?
Yes, I'm still here. So about the easement, I mean, are we gonna be getting, if this passes, are we gonna get something in writing to ensure that that will never happen with an entrance into Holly Court?
Well, there's different ways to do this and there's different caveats that we can put on in conditions for approval, should we get to that point. But, um, yeah, but I think the, the process for the public hearing is to bring these out to the forefront so we can have a discussion and we can know your concerns. So that's the important part of what we're doing right now. But as we get through the deliberations and as we come to a point where we have to decide one way or another, all of these things can get hashed out. And all of these things could become conditions of approvals if it goes that way. I'm not saying, because it's, it's, it's a work in progress. But yes, thank you for bringing up the concern. Uh, several of the other neighbors have also spoken to that, along with other concerns, so we have those noted as well. All right, so anyone else in the public, online or here? Okay, all right, so, um, commission, do we have any questions at this point for the applicant? Anyone?
I'll head you. I guess I've heard a few times asking for an eight-foot, um, I'm wondering if that would be problematic or available. I don't, I guess I don't know if it would make a difference from the site view of the houses to the homes in the lower area, but I'm just curious for exploring that opportunity, maybe for that one, uh, westfall.
How does the eight-foot sentence, part, part of it is cost, from a six-foot to eight-foot is not just, uh, it's a pretty big expense. I'm not opposed to doing it on the, on the two sides, if that's what they want. It's a little bit uglier because when you look at the vinyl, you have another panel at the top and I've, I've seen it, it's not as, how do I say it? Aesthetic pleasing is vinyl still, but you still have, it's not as nice in my opinion, but I would, if that's what the commission says, eight-foot, I think.
How about estate fencing?
Haven't looked at that as far, what do you mean by estate?
Like the wrought iron, it's like a, a black wrought iron, so it's not a solid.
And you don't have the privacy that they want to fence with privacy.
Well, I, you have to stop and envision what it's gonna look like if you encompass an eight-foot fence on three sides. It's, it's not gonna be a pretty picture. Whereas if you have something, I mean, you're gonna leave the trees, you're leaving existing trees and you're talking about uh, putting additional landscaping in on the back for the Holly Court thing and dressing that out. So if you had something in line of an eight, estate fencing, you still have the security and you still have the privacy, you're, you're, but you're gonna have a, a green wall as opposed to a white vinyl wall. I mean, because those, those plastic fences are really, they're nice and shiny.
I don't really know what the state fences, but I was under the impression of the privacy. And if a state fencing does, I'm not opposed to either one, I'm just not really familiar that that will be the privacy. I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah.
I just don't really know if that's the intent of what they come up to say.
Yeah, I just think aesthetically it may look a lot better, but that's.
Go with that, I'm, I'm happy to go either way. So I believe that as a commission, I'm doing this
Yeah.
to try to please the neighbors and I don't wanna do something that's not gonna please them. I thought their, their concern was privacy and that's the best way, I know, if, if you feel that an estate fence is more for privacy, it means that their concerns, I'll be fine.
Okay, all right, good to know, thank you. All right, Tim?
State fencing is, uh, more aesthetically pleasing than the plastic, uh, vinyl fencing. You know, they have those spikes on top of it, those, the wrought iron, so people can't crawl over it uh, without it, they slip, they get a little bit, uh, high-voiced. But, uh, but the state business for people down through Farms and Amulets, where we're, we're doing on Farms and Amulets, Walgreens, uh, those, uh, areas there, stop it out, so all state fencing, uh, just more pleasing, that's.
Any other commissioners at this point? Okay.
Could I just address some of the neighbors' concerns at this point?
Yeah.
As well, um, there's a concern, um, first from my neighbor to the south with the, uh, auto park. He was here a couple of times and he asked us to increase the, uh, distance from his, from his yard, which we've done. We were at seventeen feet, we're now up to twenty-five feet. That last unit, uh, was in direct, um, response to his comment that I would like the buffer to be larger, so we moved the duplex, added that single and increased the buffer area. So that's why we did it. I don't know why, he's not happy with it, I heard his concerns tonight, but that was our thinking and moving that there. Uh, the other concern I heard was dog park versus a playground. Um, with my experience with these, uh, units and other things, there are not a lot of children. Playground wouldn't go to be useful, however, most people Playground wouldn't go to be useful. However, most people today do have a pet. It's a dog or something, something else, but most people do have a pet, and I think the dog park would be more beneficial to the people who wanna live there, creating more of the community, which, uh, I've heard some of the neighbors say that they like. People do walk their dogs around the neighborhood and also into the dog parks and go. Um, that's something I don't have in my other private, we have the woods, um, and people end up, uh, doing that more. Um, of the other twenty units that I have in, in the town of Berlin, just one child. So to have a playground for one child, it's not, it's not, might, might be not good for the entire community. They're good for the one household. Um, the heights of the buildings, they haven't changed from the beginning, so those, those are the same. Um, and then as far as makeup of units, again, my twenty, twenty units and also in Berlin, there are all young people. I think there's one, maybe two older people. So I would, uh, with my experience, say that it's natural that people who are, young people are coming to Berlin, the people are young professionals. They are, they are here. It's not the older people, at least in the units that I have, because there's stairs, there's other items, there might be more in Berlin, but they're not coming to, uh, these types of projects. Um, and that's all I, I've done. Something else on the easement.
Yeah, um, again, on the easement, uh, I think already actually read it into the record as to what we're allowed, not allowed to do with that easement specifically set to certain water. There's no way we can use it as an access easement unless somebody wants to grant this, mission across the property to use it as an access easement, it's impossible. So, I mean, there's already a guarantee that we cannot use it as anything other than water and sewer. And I put on the record here, um, while we're using it for sewer, uh, it doesn't make any sense to bring water in turnparks for this development, water in turnparks.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take a, a moment here and give you some thoughts, all righty? All because I'm looking at this project and I realize we're only, we're only talking about basically two acres of land, and then what? This all started when you had that little hotel that was in there. I think we only had, what was it, eight little houses?
Eight, I suppose, a couple of, I think there were.
Yeah, so, yeah, so maybe it was like eight or maybe ten altogether. And now we've cleared this all out, and we're up, we were up to eight, uh, up to twenty, now we're down to eighteen. But still, I'm having a hard time visualizing what, I mean, because we look at it on paper, it doesn't give you the true feeling of what exactly is gonna be the finished product. I mean, we're talking about these homes only having ten feet between them from wall to wall. So I'm looking at this dice, this, I'm thinking, okay, the corner here to the corner there, isn't that about ten feet? So I'm thinking, one wall here, one wall here, and, and that's not a lot of green space between the two. That's, that's not a lot for saying community to me, okay? That's being said and done. I look and now I'm trying to visualize. Now you've come down to the eighteen, but again, I'm having a problem with squeezing all this in on this property. There's a lot happening here. So I'm looking at it, and the first thing I'm thinking is I would definitely lose number eighteen, which is in the center aisle. I would definitely, I know what you did with thirteen, because thirteen was, was kicked out, and what you did was straighten it out. So you didn't lose thirteen. And, uh, in a way, I, I think you need to lose thirteen, and taking into account the neighbors on Holly Court and their concerns, plus also understanding that, you know, you're looking to develop the property. Okay. I'm thinking, and I'm just thinking out loud, and I'm gonna throw it out there. Units, uh, the duplex known as twelve-eleven, ten-nine, and eight-seven along that back. Make them single-family units. Just one, two, three. That's it. Lose thirteen, lose eighteen, make these single families so that the single-family homes that are on top of that hill, they're not looking down at Holly Court, and Holly Court's not looking straight up at them because of two-story family. It is definitely gonna be, uh, a, a vision breaker, so to speak, from Holly Court. So that's my perspective there. And then, of course, you do have the duplexes on the side, and I think that that's, well, you're about thirty feet off of, uh, the property that's owned by the auto place. And then you have the three duplexes on the other side. But that's just me looking at this plan and hearing what's been happening with that and trying to visualize what you have on paper. So that's, I, I mean, I'm putting that out to you. Is that a consideration?
I, I mean, the zone allows for, for the twenty, and I do understand that, that maybe on paper, but I, I've done things with our ten feet apart, and compared to apartment buildings, there is gonna be a lot of space, and there is gonna, and to take out the number of units you, you did, that's, I, I'm not, I'm only losing income, I'm not gaining anything, saving on expenses. The roadway's still the same, the other items are still the same. So while I'd love to be able to say, yeah, let's just do all single-family houses, but if we do do that, we're gonna go back to encroaching on the buffer like we started this project. That's, you know, we have to make, I, I, I do need to make the project viable as well.
I understand, but even, even if we remove, even if we bring that number down, you still are gonna have, what, thirteen homes? Two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. You'll have thirteen homes.
Which is almost, you know, close to half, not half, but from the original twenty that we, we did, uh, uh, agree with. Again, the zone does call a lot for the twenty. Thirteen is a big cut. I understand where you're trying.
I'm trying, I'm just trying to see if there's, uh, if my suggestions could reach a happy medium.
I thought I had, but, uh, again, I, I would put that back, say, what are we, what's more important, or, or on the develop, is the buffer to the neighbors more important, or is it the number of, of units that are more important?
I see. I think at this point, it's just making a good community for you.
Right.
All right. And we have, and this is a difficult spot, because you are on the Berlin Turnpike. You have neighbors to the, uh, to the back of you. You have businesses. You have, aren't you right next to the antique place?
Yes, yes.
So I mean, what you're trying to create, at least what I'm thinking you're trying to create, is sort of an oasis in the middle of all of this. And so I'm trying to help you come to that paradise, uh, that arrival of paradise, where people can actually pull in and say, oh, God, thank goodness I'm home. And I think that's what you're reaching for, and I'm trying to get you there.
Yeah, and I think, well, I, I would, I would think that we are there, and I would look at other communities along the Berlin Turnpike. Edgewater being one of the coolest ones, which is, I don't even know what separation they have. I think they're just roads and townhouses, um, and they're next to an auto shop. They're, they're, I know, yes, they're at the back to the lake.
Yeah, well, they got the, they got the beautiful lake, and that's, that's the solid.
Yeah, that is true. But there, as far as community and green space, they don't have, I don't, I don't think, have what I have there. They're more pavement and more areas. I have looked around and looked at other, other spots, and my other one on the corner of Main Street and three seventy-two, we've got commercial across the street. Got houses on that side, and that's, again, a successful project in my opinion, that, the type of people that we wanna attract to Berlin, um, so.
Yeah, but Edgewater has the lake. That's the, that's the green space, is really blue space, so.
You gotta go jump.
Because they all, they all just kayak and they canoe and they motorboat, jet ski and everything. So that's their backyard. But anyway, so I'm, I'm, that's, that's my thoughts on the project, um, and I'll, obviously, I'll open it up for the other commissioners as well.
Um, yes, I mean, we've been doing this for quite a few Thursdays now, uh, and what I'm hearing from Mr. Snow is, after all the revisions and everything, that this is pretty much your final.
I hate to put it that way, but yeah, we're pretty, pretty close. If it was within one, maybe, oh, I could, that'd lose another six units, five units, that's, that's a lot, we'll, we'll come and protect it.
So, um, I think it's time that we make a decision.
Well, we're still in public hearing.
Yes, so I'm just saying, if there's no more question, I would.
As long as there's, um, as long as there's no need for further testimony, uh, because once we close a public hearing, then it just becomes our solid deliberations that, and we can't take in testimony. Yes, Tim?
So, again, I'll think about, like I spoke about last meeting. This is not the project that was foreseen in the tax zone. Made a single-family little house living, just like you got, where you're titled. Okay. And if you Google little house living in, Google, and you come up with single-family home. Small, eight-hundred-square-foot homes, right? Uh, maybe two-bedroom, one bath. A new couple, married couple, young couple, uh, single person. You know, not big family homes, but a little home living. And that's, that was a concept that came out of California. Uh, and coming across the United States, down, down in the southern parts of the United States. Uh, and that was the concept that was in mind, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, rentals or, or sale, uh, that's a debate. Uh, but the single-family residential, uh, when we talked about it, was the idea. And I don't see this as that. And like I said last time, there was a bonus in doing a single-family residential. If we had, had to put a little bonus in there, uh, from these motels, uh, to get the better-looking development in the, you know, door, 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 all the way down through, on, on, uh, the single hotels. Uh, and that's the type of living development that we thought about going there. So if there was eight single families on this, uh, unit, and if I remember in my mind, Mr. Forrest put, uh, two units in one of those buildings, two, two units in another building that was in the front. So the total of twelve units. And with bonus, fourteen, sixteen units, single-family units. I think that's the, the, the look that was here, supposed to be here. Wait, it is right now with the dog park. Uh, will we go maintain that dog park? And I might, but German Shepherd, it wouldn't work. Uh, so, so I'm just wondering that, uh.
Interesting. I mean, your, your comments were, I agree, we started this.
That was the start of.
I wanted to do all single fans, but again, part of the process here was the neighbors came on, so we did single family, we're too close to your buffer, so in order to move them up and to accommodate, if, if I come with a proposal and say, okay, it's eighteen single family, and we're up against the buffers again, we're balancing everybody's, you know, while your opinion is one, and I'm not saying yours is wrong, I would rather have it, but, um, it, it, then I'm, then I'm angering the neighbors and, and, and angering some of the, some of the areas that I, I didn't wanna do in this process.
I, I really think that, that, uh, the buffers can be held too close where they are right now. Uh, those single-family houses were deep, not wide. Did you widen them out a little bit for them there? Uh, so did that, uh, I think that's in, in there. And, and, you know, like I said, you, 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 you said it right in the beginning, that's what you wanted to do. Uh, I think there was a way to do that. If you wanted to do it with twenty houses, okay, I don't think twenty would work. Uh, I think that fourteen, sixteen number would work and be beneficial to you, uh, at the end. If you have more good-looking build, uh, property, more with the neighbors than we wanted to make sure it was. Single-family residential buttoned this most side, most of this property. You guys say the family residential, yes, it's in this smaller piece of property, uh, but your single-family residential is smaller homes. And it would also attract, attracts smaller families, couples, uh, or single persons. So, uh, you know, and affordable, affordable today, I heard the, the, people say what affordable is right now. I can't believe what affordable is right now either. You take, uh, sixty or eighty percent of the median income, uh, you're talking sixty, eighty thousand dollars for, for affordable income. That puts a lot of rental money. And, and rental warnings are really all a whack right now. I, I couldn't, I couldn't sell a house and, and live in the one of those rentals because they get a border.
And so that is the, the taxes that have to be paid.
Well, that's true, you know.
And that would just make the less, the, the comment, I, I can't answer, but the zone allows for the twenty. It allows, it doesn't say you have to do single family. The zone also allows for fifteen-foot buffers in the back. Um, it allows for some of the things that I didn't do. I created more green space, and, and by doing that, I had to make some sacrifices, and so you can't sacrifice the entire project. I don't know if it works with sixteen or eighteen home, but by the time you're done constructing the roadway, interest rates rising, the other parts from an economic side. I know that's not the commission's decision for economics side, but what is the commission's decision is what is written in the regulations. The regulation allows for twenty units to go in there. I'm going, it allows for certain buffers to go in there. I'm doing that special permit. Um, we've gone through all their criteria, and we meet all the special permit criteria. So while I, I appreciate your opinions, I appreciate all the neighbors' opinions, their opinions, and I gotta take those opinions and make them work within the regulation, and that's what I'm trying to.
I, I, I gotta agree with you, the fifteen-foot, uh, of the line, that's something that got, got by me. Because in single-family residential properties, you need a flat area thirty feet behind a home, so they should have been at least thirty feet. Uh, but, uh, they didn't, they didn't, that's not what it came out to be.
Right, so, uh, and that's, I would just, you know, say, look at the commission and say, look, I'm looking at this project, does it meet all the regulations? Maybe I don't like it, maybe I think it's too dense. In my professional opinion, I don't think that's the case. I think people do have a sense of community here. I think the dog park is a benefit for people to take, not the big German Shepherds, not the, we, we don't usually have, it's in a small eight-foot place. You're gonna have, uh, a small little dog, something that's under thirty pounds, that will enjoy that. So, again, these are all my opinions, and I'm not confrontational or anything. It's just, you look at the project and you start to say, this is what happens.
We don't propose to be confrontational.
No, I just want you to die in, I just, I mean, I get, you know, we start talking, it's just, we've worked, I've worked on this a year, I worked getting the regulation done. I come through to this commission to do that. I bought other motels on the Berlin Turnpike, you, you know, with this in mind to go and changes. So those are all the things from my side, not that those are your concern, but I just wanna make sure that they're heard.
Oh, no, I, I understand, and I, I understand, I do hear them. Okay. And, yeah, June?
I, I am fairly new to the panel, and just a couple of questions, if you have some thoughts. Did I remember that your, the, the plan is to make them rentals? Is that such a, okay. And, um, I guess, I'm not against what the commissioner or chairman has said about removing a couple of buildings. Um, but I'm trying to look back to what I, my experience has found as well. Um, and maybe what types of people would be renting the building, like you had mentioned. Um, it seems, you know, things are changing where younger people starting in homes are wanting more, so they're wanting more of a home instead of an apartment. And I think from that perspective, I do think this type of home kind of fits the bill of what that first step is for someone looking for a place to live or rent. Um, I've lived, I came from a duplex. The home I left was duplex. I didn't use the space in between the buildings, however, my space was a little wider, probably double that, twenty feet maybe. It seems tight. Um, so if we went ahead and talked about removing the single on the end, and I'm not saying to do that, I'm just talking through again. You know, maybe on that one end, we can work with the neighbors a little bit and maybe put a little more space at that end. But I like the dog park. Younger people don't have children as much when they're starting out, and so I like a lot of what I see on that. It does seem really, really close.
And just, just so, when you say the space between, I don't envision anyone being in the space between. They're gonna be behind where we put.
Right. That's what I said. It just visually, when you come in, it's really tight
Correct.
between the tall buildings, like she had mentioned. If we at least remove that one of, and we can just spread things out a little, and that that may be the best choice. It'd be either the single on the end or the double in the middle, um, just to try to open up the space a little bit more. But those are, those are just some of the thoughts I had, that it looks like a nice place for a young couple or a couple of single people moving in, wanting more, wanting a home setting, wanting a neighborhood setting, looking for that sense, but yet not ready to buy.
So, all right.
Agreed, that's our, that's our intent.
Anyone else on the commission have any questions?
Anyone else on the commission have any questions? Yeah. Thank you. Just for clarification. For the proposed dog park area and the community garden area. Are those two locations where hydrants, water hydrants would also be included?
No, when you say water hydrants.
For to water the dogs, to water the garden.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other two points, I think are making more comments than they are questions. The concern that I have about the fence, no matter what type of fence it is, is the proximity of the fence and the fence posts. The disturbance to install the fence posts to the root zone of the trees that are already existing. And that there's a very high likelihood of causing decline of the trees that are there in doing that disturbance. So that's one concern that I have. And then we had talked at one point about mixing up the proposed landscaping. And I think I remember only seeing maybe two, two different shrub types, rhododendron and maybe an arborid. It would be nice if we could maybe add a third choice in there.
That's, that would be a problem.
And then I I really appreciate all of the comments that the commission has with respect to trying to make this a more desirable plan. I think we're all feeling a bit of regret from what we've allowed in the text amendment. Because we didn't have something in front of us like this. We didn't have the vision for what it could be or what it could be.
Neither did I, I envisioned something different, but as it morphed into something, this is where we.
So your point is well taken, that zoning allows for it. Okay, yes. For the first time I joined up this property, I looked at it and said, that's just too many houses to put into that piece of property to squeeze in. Even though it's in the regulations. With that being said, you, you you've added a couple of things in here that even if you could take them out, it would make it look so much nicer in here, make it more open. The, the center area, take that unit out and put a gazebo in there. Take the end one out, the single one, it just seems to open it up a little bit more, makes it more like a little small community. And I understand your concerns on what you're trying to do here and but in my heart of hearts, I just feel it would be so much more appealing if those two units were out. Accommodated with the neighbors and then the fencing that they wanted, going 28 foot fence. Single, single family would be great, but I understand your concern again on that. But I still feel that taking those two units out would open this up and just make it more convenient. Do any of it. Okay, all right. We're still in public hearing.
I mean, the eight foot fence versus six foot fence and commission brought up the question on the trees. And obviously the eight foot fence, there's more of a post that has to be dug and more likely. We're gonna be as careful as we can, but in some cases you can't. Eight foot, you gotta go down deeper, you gotta dig a larger hole to get that post in, into our postal figure. So just to keep that as we've all been through this, the balance here is, is, you know, if you go with eight foot fence and I agreed to do it, it could be more of a chance of damage to the trees and posts of 60. But again, we'll take as best care as we can to not damage anything.
All right, okay, so we're still in public hearing, anything else before we, you know, go on to the next stop? Yeah, Maureen. Why don't we have a town plan, yes?
Thank you. I am just trying to wrap up a few things as, as I've been listening, trying to add them to my comment sheet. So that they don't get overlooked in the end. I do want to note on my comment sheet of comments with regard to the housing affordability plan. You know, I put in there as I have in the past when we've had housing authority, uh, housing affordability plans that they be subject to the review, revision and approval of corporation council. I wanted to, to reiterate that, but also the, and, and the management there of the, to the satisfaction of the town. Usually someone is listed as management. I have updated, been trying to update as we've gone through specifically the town engineer comments to say, you know, adjust, adjust, adjust. As far as I've been running through that because they were strictly cut, pasted from those comments from July. And have noted, and just wanted to reiterate what I said earlier about getting that confirmation from him that they can be addressed as a condition, if that's the way the commission chooses to go. I wanted to point out that water control and made comments that are included in the bio and in the, in your packages. And again, cut and pasted into this, it's the most recent staff comments. I did talk to Ray, our water control director, that's not his title, but he has said that the first item has been resolved and that the details of items two through six are details that can be resolved during permitting. So, and, and for the concern of the public water control does review and evaluate any hookups to the town sewer and our water systems that goes through, through a process with, which the public may not be aware of. As far as comments. Sorry, give me a minute. I also wonder from the commission's standpoint, if it would be helpful if staff, because it's a little difficult to do on our sharing our screen here for the public as well out on over Zoom. If it would be helpful if we compiled the overall layout from the first, the opening of the public hearing through to the transition each time as the plans have transitioned. Because there, I, I was hearing some back and forth on a couple of issues where like, I, I was envisioning it might be helpful to say, see that, that oh, this plan had that, and we talked, it was talked about doing this, and this adjustment was the, oh, adjustment three, and kind of set out. Then one, then two, then three, I think you know, before, because of the four, four days of coverage, right? Just so you could see how it, it evolved. To determine what's still outstanding and what was somewhat, I think it was known, that was less clear, it's more clear on one plan than on another. I, I hope that's helpful, but if you ask me for it, then we can do that, whether you keep the public hearing open or you close it. If it's in the record, we can just put it together for you. And then there's just making sure before you close the public hearing that there's well, yes, no, I guess to just in your, in your decision, just making sure that we have a clarification of the eight foot versus six foot fence, the type of fence, the location of it inside or outside the tree line. I learned that I wasn't able to reconcile during the, during the conversation so far. So just trying to clean up type of items.
So what we're saying is that. So this visual that you would put together, we could do that if the public hearing was closed even, or we have to repeat the public hearing?
Yeah, it was a big long part of the record, but, but then you may all have those plans on your public table at home and ready to, to know which one was at which, meaning and what happened, but a lot was presented on the screen.
Yeah.
And we have it digitally, you've gotten them, you've seen them. And I think you'd say this, just print it and say, this was what you saw on 11-3 versus the same plan number, whichever plan it is, they are throughout, just so you can kind of.
Okay.
On our, yeah, it helps me.
All right, okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Commission has the right to review all, submission of all paperwork that happened over the last well, we've split the screen. So we can review it and we have, I don't know how long to do it after.
So once you close the public hearing, there's essentially five days to decide and then.
We have time to review everything. So I make a motion to close the public hearing. I think we received every piece of public comment that we could, and I think the commission has made every comment. We play it and now we have to study and go with our own feelings and that.
Okay, and then motion second by Ms. Georgie for the discussion. All was in favor, I think those opposed are moving. So the public hearing is closed, we just need to, yes.
We can't see.
Yeah, Steve Biella, do we?
Where are you going?
Yeah, no, he's still here.
Hi, you guys here, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you, Sue.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
I always, it's one through the words, okay. All right, so the public hearing is closed and we'll have to deliberate and make a decision based on your testimony and ask questions and stuff. So now the hard work starts for us, okay?
We can take this only from our staff.
From the staff, you can, but not from the public, okay?
Is that something that, I'm nowhere on the agenda for this, is that, I think it'd be something because I'm not sure.
Oh, we're one layer of everything. I am.
Too late, Larry.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
You want to make some.
I think we're gonna wanna look at it, so that's.
Don't wanna stay if it's not gonna.
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak for the commission, so I'm trying to.
Well, it's like, go on the sweep.
All right, if you want, well, because we're in public hearing, could we just tell him when we, when we, when we come under old business, just to, to schedule him to move him on to the next meeting? Is that gonna go on to November 17th or is it gonna go later than that?
The old business stays for you guys to discuss and any, okay, any time when the whole.
All right.
So the next meeting is, I don't think inappropriate if you're ready to comment on this, whether or not you're planning to have it further this evening or if you're agreeing or not discussing it.
Well, I think we're agreeing.
I think that's perfectly appropriate, but that's something.
Should we advance the agenda to move it to the front right now so we can make a.
Make a motion.
Well, we could, no, I thought, if you can, because you're still in public hearing with other items, so.
Public hearing is a public hearing to itself as well, you're not in one public hearing for all time.
Yeah, but I think we can. I think we can give it a flavor or at least the idea that we are not gonna be deliberating it tonight. And that will probably, we may take it up on the November 17th, but please check with our planner to see if it's gonna be on the agenda at the 17th. You know, if the holidays coming and all this other stuff, things are starting to get me bothered back, okay? All right.
So I have a second, this one I'd like to get a decision one way or.
Oh yeah, we're not gonna do anything tonight. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna think on this one.
By day, probably pick that.
Yeah, no, that's all right. In other words, just, just relax. Skip checking, or Maureen will call you and let you know if you make the jump or if there's any consensus that we wanna move forward of deliberating on it, okay? All right, terrific, thank you, thank you very much, okay. So now we're gonna go on to the next application for 550, 550, 550, this is already being, I thought this was.
This is still open.
Okay, all right, so this is, this is still open. So this is the Berlin Turpike Associates Association LLC, 550 Berlin Turpike, map 10-2, block 83, 13 feet. 522 Berlin Turpike, map 10-2, block 83, lot 14. 554 Berlin Turpike, map 10-2, block 83, lot 14. This was continued. And this was 10-6, that's continuing now. And we have two parts of it, and one was the zoning amendment, zoning map amendment request for Berlin Turpike BT1 to the Berlin Turpike Development, BTD. And then the special permit, site plan application for the mixed use development, including 106 residential units within three buildings, a retail building and reconfiguring the parking lot with two commercial buildings. That's a lot of stuff. So here we are, and we have a turn of self.
Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good morning, Brad. What's your attorney, Tom Sullivan, the applicant, 550 or 554 Berlin Turpike Associates LLC. With me tonight is Mark Ove, the engineering on the project. Not with us tonight, Mark Vertucci, the traffic engineer, Brian Miller, who prepared the housing affordability plan and Jeff Jacky, the architectural plans. The reason they're not here today is luckily we'll be meeting them. They've had their presentation last time. We're still digesting some of the comments that we just recently received. Before I proceed, I'd like to do some housekeeping. We're gonna need to keep the public hearing open tonight because we're in the process, as I stated, of responding to some engineering comments that we just received earlier this week. I'll address that later. However, with the October 6th public hearing opening, November 3rd today, 28 days. To November 17th, it'll be 14 additional days. So I've calculated that we need seven days of extension time and we grant that, I can follow it up with an email. That would get us to the, what I normally couch it in terms of, whatever's necessary to get us through the next public hearing. I believe that'll be seven days as long as the November 17th date goes forward. But I'll put that in email to the town planner. The Berlin Turpike Authority owns this property on the west side of the Berlin Turpike, just north of Woodlawn Road. We show it on print here. We discussed it. We discussed it in detail last time. As you're traveling south of the Berlin Turpike, it's just, it's west, I'm sorry, it's south of Deming Road, just north of Woodlawn Road. Everybody knows it has the ABC Supply Company property, there's actually three lots there. There's no small retail lot, there's the ABC Supply Company lot, and then there's a residential development, almost real lot. I won't go over all the specifics that we went over last time, however, it is a very difficult site. We have high tension power lines running through the site. We have next door adjacent piece of property of the town. We have the town water tank. There's a significant elevation change from the Berlin Turpike now into the Nevada Basin River region. It essentially sits in a hole with public utilities as a property. This is the second application, we ran out of time last time, addressing some, some concerns. I'll go over that in a second, as I stated. But the commission at first look, when we submitted this over a year ago, was concerned about it being an ISO. Well, in a lot of respects, the property, except for the ABC Supply Company, is an ISO now because of the high tension lines and thing. And we're making the best of that situation. It's not an, it won't be an ISO when you finish with it. We've already made significant improvements to the proposal based on comments that we've heard. The proposal includes a commercial, retail and housing component. Housing proposals for 106 units and three buildings, including affordable houses and set aside. On October 6th, we presented the project to the commission. We briefly reviewed the Gomen in New York report. Went to more detail on that now, Gomen in New York, I believe Don, Don Gomen is on tonight. He was the author of that report. And we also took comments from the commission. The hearing was left open in anticipation of the WMC engineering report, which was just received in Monday afternoon. While Bart had started to develop responses to the WMC report, is our intention to submit a complete response and revised plans by November 10th. While Bart started to develop responses to the WMC report, is our intention to submit a complete response and revised plans by November tenth. And I just wanted to alert the commission to a, um, a tight timeline that we are now on because of some of the delays. And that, uh, we have to close, we have to close this public hearing by December fifteenth. That gives us three, three, um, meetings between, uh, December seventeen, December first, and December fifteenth. Bart, who was working feverishly this week, um, to, uh, to develop responses to the engineering, uh, report. He's told me that we will get that response in with revised plans by November tenth. But I just wanted that, wanted to make that known, that we are running into a, a tight timeline right now, um, having to close this public hearing. And one, and one of the reasons we have to close the public hearing on December, uh, fifteenth is because of the significant, um, uh, time period between the December fifteenth meeting. And the next meeting of the commission, which is until January nineteenth. It'll be just missed sixty five days, and with the extension time, by five days to go to January nineteenth. So I'm just explaining the, the time period that we're under right now. But moving to go to the, uh, Don Gomen re- report, um, I just wanna read some excerpts from it. Uh, we will be addressing some specific aspects of that and the WMC report, but the proposed application, the complete ten of his report. Uh, Don says the proposed applications generally meet or comply with the town of Berlin regs for mixed use commercial residential development in the BTD zone. There's a caveat, he indicates that there are items for the commission to consider. None rise to a level of concern to claim the applications do not or cannot comply with their zoning regs. He's confident that many, if not all considerations, can be just addressed satisfactorily. Uh, the zone change application, he states, uh, it complies with the planning, um, the plan of development, um, and the plan of conservation development, and a comprehensive plan of zoning. The site plan application, uh, complies with, uh, quoting that, uh, the applicant's addressed several concerns of the first application, and he lists, um, he lists these. And it describes it as substantial and meaningful improvements that improve the overall quality and design. The last consideration that he can, that he recites in his report is the special permit application, and he reviews the various considerations that this commission. Um, considers when it reviews a special permit application. I've only, I've outlined, uh, I've identified two predominant, uh, considerations. Uh, the first is the, whether it's an appropriate location or size and suitable location, and he references the intensity of the existing commercial development. We will be addressing that in detail on the, in the November tenth, um, response, and he also mentions that the density of the residential development with the site design. We will also be, um, responding to that in the, in the November tenth. He also references the electric lines, as commission, as Commissioner Tim Zimran had referenced previously, um, I will be providing materials for that. Uh, there's not a lot out there, there's been something that's been researched, and what we're talking about with the transition lines is EMFs, the electromagnetic fields. And as you can see, many, many projects have been, um, approved around town where the, these power lines that run through town. Well, they've been dealt with by the developer, and residential development has taken place. But we will be addressing that with, with materials on EMF, um, at the next meeting. And the last one was the long term liability, I will also be providing additional materials, um, showing that, um, we really support this project, that this, there's a long term viability in this project. A lot of it having to do with marketing analysis based on the, um, traffic volume of the Berlin Turnpike for, for commercial, uh, and retail development, as well as the, um, uh, housing core. That's being developed and, and composed, but, um, along the Berlin Turnpike. All of those will be specifically addressed in the November tenth response by Mr. Boba. The commission also made some, um, statements last time, and there's some concerns, electric charging stations, a school bus stop with side, with sidewalk access. Um, speed bumps, and the, um, rotor return radius, all of those are being worked on, and it was part of a comprehensive response. We thought it wouldn't be appropriate to, uh, piecemeal this, giving you some tonight, and then piecemeal it before, uh, on November tenth, just a comprehensive response. It's concise, it's clear, you can pick it up, you know, you're not referring to three or four documents. And, uh, the WMC report, Bart will be going over all of this in detail, but, uh, while, while more detailed response and revised press will be submitted on November tenth. Bart will address some of these sixty nine comments, a lot of these are technical in nature, that, uh, are gonna be, um, requiring revisions to the plans, whether it be elevation changes or additional, um, calculations. I won't, I won't steal Bart's thunder, uh, we identified a few things that we wanna address tonight, that, um, we are somewhat intractable on. Uh, for instance, there's a proposal, or the, the engineer consultant is, is suggesting that we, uh, hold it around. Which causes parking issues and changes the design of the building, um, we think that's a little out of his lane. Uh, he's doing the engineering report, I'll address, I'll, I'll address that, um, nowhere did it was proposed by the planner that was retained by the town as a consultant. And so we're trying to limit the, um, WMC report to the engineering aspects, and it related things to the engineering, but we don't see anything, um, engineering wise. Um, in his report about moving our, our residential building number three, and I'll, I'll let Bart address that, I have a few other things at this time, correct?
Perfect, thank you. Has he left you, has he left you anything?
You left me.
Sixty nine, I.
Have you left, have you left the meetings, I just watched you.
Sure.
Oh, alright.
Bart Hovey.
You'll find some.
Itchy cold. Uh, I'm here to respond to some of the engineer comments, and we basically, that is, the letter is a, um, the thirty first of October, a lot of time staff. Decided it out, and we started working on the responses, uh, it was basically Tuesday, took me all day to write an on-page response to all the comments. So what I'm, what I've given you, I think you've got copies of it.
I don't know.
Is a, yes, I think that was his little mouth package, he showed the initial response to the comments. These will be modified as the plans are generated, they're revised, but these are just my original, uh, initial comments, response to some of the comments. And I do apologize for some of the typos you're gonna find in there, but the more I look at this, the more I see typos, so.
So we're, we're not gonna talk about typos tonight.
So anyway.
We're not addressing typos tonight, not, not.
There were basically three types of comments that were, were in this package, so I looked at. Uh, the first set were this, uh, items of statements, you know, just acknowledging the fact that the handicap ratio was good, uh. He's got no comments on the zone change, the parking site was satisfactory, and we're new that. And the, out of the roundabout, those are basically what I do is acknowledge, no action taken. There were some items, or the majority items were technically involved, these are items that, you know, check grade, check elevations, check road lines, provided, provided that. And we've got no problem providing most of that information, there were some issues that I feel were no action taken because they were just statements of fact that, uh. They weren't like, item C for number six, the overall park count. We've got an abundance of parking for building number three, and a minimal, or lack of sufficient parking for building, step one, thank you. Unfortunately, it's nothing we can do to change that, we have revised our plans in such a way to add more parking space here, provide more green space, provide areas for snowplow removal. Loaded access, such as, we've got as much parking as possible in that area, there's just so much parking, we can put here in this supplement, the regulations call for overall parking anyway. It doesn't count, uh, call for per building, so that's one of the items that we're looking at, and we just can't make adjustment on those numbers. Uh, we're also gonna provide a, a furniture plan, show lighting on the plant, unfortunately, we've got a potential dark spot in this area where the ceiling peak. Is not allowing us to put the poles within that area, uh, I've told our person who's got your furniture plan to make sure that our lights. In these two areas, somewhere slim, maybe could go, get as much light as we can within that, in that central area without violating our, our program of poles with the. Ever source within those right of ways. As Tim mentioned, there's another comment about building three and reshaping that building and losing units, and changing the shape of those buildings to provide more pleasant, or, uh, green space around the back. What we've shown, we're gonna show our plans, that we've looked at the space available, and we're gonna show it, our reviving buffers between the old, the water main and the, uh, properly, and I did have a brief search, which I'm verbally, I would say. And he thought there was adequate room to put a little buffer, not to serve the water main, was in the back of number three, so we hope to address that comment through the, those areas that I can hear. Uh, there were some other comments regarding the, uh. Uh, some of the subdivision roof control, we're gonna take care of that, I'm just gonna get some of the comments, see if you see something you want me to discuss. About there's some details on the walls, but it will be your best practices, uh, through these areas to make sure they don't run out. We're looking through all our stuff and all our manuals to make sure we're gonna do this properly, uh.
Item sixty six, the community center architectural.
Yeah, we got that one submitted with the. Yeah, there were some comments regarding architectures and submissions, the creative room, there were architectural submissions for the package. And another comment that was discussed was the potential for doing test beds within the storage area and borings within the areas of the buildings. Uh, we would, uh, with regard to the test beds in this area here, we looked at flow maps and well and elevations, and we're quite confident that our, uh. The tension area is gonna be above the, uh, under foot elevation, high ground water, it not be a wet base, we've designed it to be a dry base, and we prefer the diapetition. Uh, and also with the, the boring for stipulate on the plans, the boring to the prior to destruction foundation and information is provided. We don't typically do borings at this stage of a plan, uh, for these buildings, and what will happen was before they start construction, there were good boards. The structural engineer, this foundation will pull the boards, they will determine the right way to, uh, design the foundation within the area. As I said, there were quite a bit of comments that came through, there was no comment regarding the storm discharge to locations. Oh, yeah, that's fifteen on the comments. And that was the comment on the building, Ken. But there was a comment regarding the two, the two discharge locations of this area. Uh, those are basically prescriptive drainage areas that the guy found when they built this, uh, building originally back fifty sixties, yes.
I don't mind, yeah, I know, but not that low.
Uh, they already drain their water towards the river, and we worry about ownership. Uh, what we plan on doing is kinda rectifying that, formalizing the drainage agreements in those areas. And the town of Berlin basically owns a wedge property that runs the river, and all of this area, they have got no rights to access back in there. At present time, so we, at the same time, we will grant the town, uh, access rights back within those areas, so whatever maintenance needs to be done either by. This owner or by the town of Berlin, there will be adequate rights granted, so they can have access, so instead of the town, or themselves down the sewer anyway. To get you to know that access back in there. Uh, I know there was some discussions about school buses, Tim had a personal point of view, we're, we're kinda looking at that, we've always anticipated the school board would pick up students close to the buildings. There were dudes that we don't expect, a lot of school kids have all, I should state that up, so we are running, we're running toward movements around that call section, I'm a straight, that calls. That'll round about all the side, it's gonna be large, uh, Commissioner George, he has a question, in our last meeting, so we're gonna make sure it's adequate time. We have potential look to drop it off and do the bus stop, down this area for school buses, that becomes very problematic. There is no place for the people to park and jump off the little kiddies by the bus stop, so that's after the work, they're probably gonna park two hundred foot, three hundred feet away anyway. So we've been encouraged, the school board, to bring the buses to private properties, if the school board does not wanna bring the people in there, we can build a small little satellite parking area up in the front. But they have buses pull off and then stop right off the turnpike, becomes problematic because people turn off the turnpike, and go ahead and stoplights for buses, so we, I think everybody would prefer the buses to come into the site. And not have to deal with all the stuff happening at the intersection, but that's the worst case scenario that we foresee. Uh, there was a comment also about the placement of, uh, uh, survey station in control within this area, so we're not gonna damage or impact these sensitive wetland areas. It was outlined, but, uh, we're gonna have a note planned that basically says any area next to the welllands, including the roads, buildings, drainage. In mitigation will require a state of license surveyor, instead of the project going through the homework, so the surveyor will know what's happening, plus, plus, more work. Those are the major highlights, but again, you've kinda had my review and my initial reactions, most of the comments, and I received ninety percent of the comments. We plan on, uh, reviewing and providing the information that's requested. I will say it's conventional, we are kind of tight for time, our next meeting, unfortunately, I'm gonna be away for a week that week, so I, I tend, I need it all, I would do it remotely. But what we're gonna try to do is hopefully get a meeting with, uh, our third party representatives, the staff, maybe a week of Thanksgiving. Have a face to face on those stuff, but at the time, we will have our plans in, they will be in your hands for probably about ten days. So this, hopefully, it's gonna be adequate time for them to review the plans, and by the time we meet with them and get things fixed up at the meeting, we get to December first. We should be in good shape with regarding most of the, the comments and having an understanding, but the reviewers as part of. Uh, again, the stuff regarding the wellands, I have kinda touched base with Chip or Boil, I don't think he's really got issue with a lot of this stuff. But I plan on, I mean, I think wellands related, I will touch base with him to make sure he's comfortable with all the information, so. We, uh, we will touch base with our, uh, in the well to work versus commission representative. And that's about all I have, unless we could find something else in this sixty nine page of comments.
Well, just, they show the storage.
Yeah, we're gonna put some of that plan on the print and revise. Right, we are gonna add that, you know, we were under the impression, we're not with Mr. Poole and originally on this thing, we can resolve a lot of those issues with storage. Our snow storage, we had enlarged his islands, we had put the plant in there, we have an additional area here, we have an additional area there. We will identify those areas of the plant, so they're not misrepresented for anybody to pull a trailer and park the trailer in there. Uh, instead of using a force, uh, these, but we felt we had that, uh, item resolved prior, and, uh, that's one of the things you wanna discuss when we meet the staff. Later this month.
Second, everyone has work to do.
And we've got a lot of work, and I've got, I've got seven days to get separated, six days.
When are you leaving?
Well, I'm leaving with that next weekend, they're closed on Friday, which means I have to have the stuff carried out on Thursday. It's Wednesday.
No, we actually don't close for that.
No, you want, we are closed on Friday.
Okay, okay.
Just because of you.
That's my bonus, that's my bonus.
Close on the eleventh, right? Yes, yeah, okay, 'cause I know that I also have to report, um, and your comments, I have not had a chance to go through them, and the justice.
I got those comments, and I checked right off.
Oh, I guess you did.
I think those were very, very.
So.
We will get all, I'll take care of, all the, all, we will look at all the crossings, all the grading, uh, every, my new little beat going there. You're going away, you gotta do it all.
Yeah, and I think Morgan has some comments, uh, or planner.
I do, uh, real quick ones, um, I want to point out to the commission, um, I don't have the list in front of me. But I believe there was some concern about the seventeenth, having all the people that were seated, or that are seated here for the seventeenth. Um, the applicant would have to agree to the extension to which out whatever date is, it's for continuance, of course, I just wanna put that out on the radar for you guys. I'll, I'll run fifty seven, I mean, go ahead, one at a time if you want, or I'll just.
Well, the only, the only thing is on the seventh change, just so that you know, and I didn't talk to you about.
Well, the only, the only thing is on the seventh change, just so that you know, I didn't talk to you about it. If I have company coming in and staying at my house, which is very hard to say, I have to go to a planning zoning meeting. When they're from out of state. And so at this point, I'm like ninety nine point eight percent sure I won't be here. Oh, I know you'll miss me. Um, but, um. I know Diane, but on the other hand, I mean, part, part of me is saying I really shouldn't be here and just tell them, hey, listen, I, this is something I had to do. So I'm up in the air. It's whether or not I'll actually. And if we have something fun planned, that I will be having fun.
The question for the, if we could plan to have a chat.
Yeah.
Are we going to have review on those plans in a week? To start talking about them or we're going to take at least a week, we can have two weeks.
So are you suggesting the first of December?
I think so.
Okay, well, let's just go with that.
And what we would like to do, uh, is schedule a virtual meeting with the consultants for the twenty first, twenty second, or twenty third of November. As somebody Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to carefully Monday or Tuesday, where we can clear a lot of things up and make sure that we're ready to move forward on December first.
Okay, so does that, does that involve the whole commission too, or no, it's not?
No, it doesn't involve anybody.
Oh, good.
You cannot be allowed to participate outside of the public hearing.
That's even better.
Okay, really, I can't speak to this. Okay, but we can, we can certainly work with the applicant and the our third party reviewers to. Find an appropriate date as long as, I mean, they are online. If one of them has an immediate. Objection to that week, you know, if they're going someplace crazy for Thanksgiving or something, then, um, that's.
Someplace delightful perhaps.
Oh, maybe that's a better way to say it. Um, maybe if the applicant know that now, but otherwise I think we could work on that. On the staff standpoint without commission having to worry about when we're all meeting so far as the staff meeting goes.
So we wouldn't meet on the seventeenth regarding the side of it would push on to the first of December. If they have to grant an extension.
Yeah, when we were prepared to grab that.
Okay, good.
Um, however, we already withdrawn the application once. There's not really a moratorium on multifamily housing. We need to close this public hearing on December fifteenth. So all issues. I just wanted to put that out there sufficiently in advance for everybody.
Yes, but the public hearing would have to be closed by the fifteen, but then allow us to deliberate.
Oh, sixty five, yeah, yeah.
I just as long as everyone here understands that, yeah, and I don't, I don't anticipate. Yes, I know, since the public is overwhelmingly here, but let me just, let me just say two quick things. So I won't give you just food for thought. And Tim will say shift aside. Inside. All right. So what I'm looking at is that road that goes down behind ABC. Now, I, I know that ABC is there, they're doing business. Are they going to be part of, are they part, I know I've asked this question before. Are they part of the development or is this a separate ownership?
They are part of the development, but they're going to be, they at least that property at the present time.
Okay.
And we include their, their ownership and their continued use as part of the base plan.
Right ownership.
Right.
And there's one owner of this property, all three blocks. It's not ABC's property.
Okay, all right. Uh, the reason is because it, it would. I would probably put my hands around her, my head around it a lot better if ABC wasn't there in the sense that. Uh, if it was part of the development to help it all work together. Because I've got all these things that are happening here and. I'm, I'm still hung up with those houses down in the back, the apartments in this in the back and just what kind of view they're going to have. Because you have the trucks that come in and out of ABC. And I talked about that before with the loading dock. I don't know that there's anything we can do about that. But here's my other thought. Um, the boulevard itself, are they straight down? Are, is it going to be dressed out at all? Or can we do something kind of like really nice or pretty with it, whether you make it a boulevard or whatever. So. You're, you're not so much driving past this old factory to get home.
We have added street trees all the entire length.
Okay.
You're going to have the natural woods and the Brooklyn River on the other side. And we've got, having a landscaping for a mountain dislocation. So when you think you turn your eyes on, you'll be looking at a building, but it's going to be directly toward the bottom.
Okay, well, maybe that's not what I was grasping, but that's, that was always part of my concern.
And we've worked on the aesthetics on the entrance, lights, benches, sidewalks. It's not just going to be a simple.
Yeah, I just.
Driveway through. It's going, it's going to look like a high street.
All right, I'll look for the additional plans and all the other stuff, but I'll keep that in mind as we go on. All right. And, um, and then, okay, okay. Yes. Yeah, go ahead, Maureen. I just.
Um, I do want, I appreciate, I just want to comment to Attorney Sullivan, Dylan and I were scrambling with dates to make sure we had all the. Decision dates, close dates, et cetera. And I appreciate him laying that out right at the meeting for you guys so that we didn't have to look for our notes. So thank you. Um, also, I was asked to do some research with regard to the transmission lines. And did pull up some very simple fact sheets. Um, we've made copies for each of you to distribute. Oh, there they are, which I'll send around, um, just for the record. Um, one is a fact sheet from the Connecticut Department of Public Health, Environmental Health Section, Electric and Magnetic Fields, E and L. Health Concerns. The next one is from the website of the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection. And that was, um, from a link on one of the other websites. Um, unfortunately, I printed it before I noticed which one it came from. I opened it. But I figured that out. Um, the next one from the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences. And the other one from EPA. So I tried to go to sources that are government. Oh, so, um, so they just have to be on the left, take one off each pile and.
Oh, um, the, the first one, I believe I started to highlight because it talked about AM maps that were not relevant, you know, the, the using your microwave.
And then as I got to the second and third, I'm like, you know. You guys really probably should pick out what you find to be relevant information and not have me saying, read this sentence, not that sentence. I didn't. I didn't feel comfortable doing that on a couple of the documents and then.
And you didn't want to.
By the last document, I said, you know, I don't have time to do that, to go through the fourth one before the meeting, but I did want to get it to you. So you have it as far in advance as you need to have it. So that's those are being distributed to you.
Okay, so, um, at that.
We're going to the first step.
The first.
I will make the motion to table this until the first.
Okay, terrific. I have a motion by Mr. Rogan, second by Ms. Jersey. For the discussion, all those in favor, I'm. All right, thank you, Steve. I keep, I, I'm sorry, Steve. I keep forgetting you're there. I know it's tough. I know it's tough. Jersey, okay. All right, thank you. And then, of course, next up item was the special site plan for plant and the village, but apparently they want to be continued to November seventeenth.
At the last meeting, they were continued to November seventeenth.
Okay. So I don't need to make any kind of motion or anything there. All right, okay, we're done with that. Public hearing, uh, October was the seventeenth. Not for a business. So the site plan for wheel houses. Um, we don't have to do anything with that. Or we're just moving right along to.
We close that three, this table has.
Yeah, I believe we have to table it until the, did we send the seventeenth, Ken? Yeah, we do the seventeenth, but he's going to come back to see if we're ready for it. Okay. And do we live a houses?
Oh, yeah.
Did we want to ask Maureen to pull everything to each? Yeah, well, is she at land by then? Is she, is she?
We'll try to do that real fast while we still have a list.
Because they're.
The biosol because.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we don't need a motion for that.
No, we're asking us some of our information.
All right, and then, okay, to move it to the seventeenth.
Not in all business because it's already.
Okay, so the application for these guys.
Not this, you could say not this, you know, but you want, because it's, yeah, I guess that's probably five or two.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to not discuss this table is until, I don't know, whatever, seven.
Okay, Mr. Rogan handed it out. Second by Ms. Jersey for the discussion, all is in favor. I. Thank you, Steve. All right. And then we have the application for these guys here at five fifty and five fifty four, so we are going to be continued to, are they commercial that?
You don't need seven.
So they'll need it September first.
Still a little bit public here.
Oh, thank you. All right. Then Quanta, we don't need a motion on that. Okay. And Randdecker, we don't have a motion on that. All right, permission business in accordance with the H dash twenty four Connecticut statutes review and recommendations for proposed purchase of the town of Rio property or by Rio Vista. Associates are also on that constraint because known as accessory map twenty two dash four block one fifty five. Lot eighteen and accessories map twenty three dash one block fifteen lots nine dash thirteen. All right, and, uh, so we have that. And I guess we have our time turning and.
I did, I want to make one comment about the information distributed just for the record. So the, we see the letter from town council. I did add to the package two maps, the, this file subdivision map that shows the layout as well as a. Um, a map from our GIS highlighting each, um, the, highlighting the strip of, uh, lots, all the by Rio this stuff. Those weren't part of the submission. Those were added by staff for your, to orient yourself to the properties. So. Oh, they didn't come from the council's, um, item.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
How are you?
Oh, good, thank you.
Nice to see the two new members. I'm Jennifer Capola and I work for Court Counsel's Office, Sealan Joffe. Um, and I'm here tonight to address you on two matters. The first one that's down is an E twenty four referral. Um, did E twenty four is referring to a Connecticut general statute that I'm going to meet, read to you momentarily. Um, but, uh, what, what this concerns is pending litigation between the town and the planning and zoning commission. And the property owner of the subject properties that are listed in the agenda item, Rio Vista Associates, I'll see. Um, there are two pending matters. I want to give you just a little bit of background, not too much because that's not really what we're here discussing. Um, just, just a little bit. Um, so the two pending matters, um, one is an administrative appeal. On denials by the commission of a tax amendment and a map amendment concerning the properties with a conceptual site plan that had been submitted for development. For a housing, um, project. And, um, the other pending litigation concerns of declaratory judgment action, um, which involves interpretation of a restrictive covenant. That was entered into between the town and a predecessor of the property owner, um, some years ago pursuant to a settlement. There have been quite a bit of litigation between the town, um, and the predecessor of interest. Um, as a result, the town purchased, as you probably are aware, purchased, um, the, the remainder of what used to be the Pistol Creek Golf, of course. Um, I think seventy seven point seven acres of that time back in two thousand and eight. Um, for five point four or five million dollars. Um, and now this, the subject property here is the remainder. Um, of the golf course property, which is nineteen point four acres. Um, so E twenty four, what does E twenty four say? Um, just to revisit this and I'll move through this quickly. But it, it is our municipal improvements statute and it says that no municipal agency or legislative body, so in your town, your legislative bodies or town councils. Shall one locate, accept, abandon, widen, narrow, or extend any street, bridge, parkway, or other public way. Two, locate, relocate, substantially improve, acquire land for. Abandon, sell, and lease in a airport, park, playground, school, or other municipally owned property or building. Re-locate or extend any public housing development, redevelopment, or over enrollment project. Or four, locate or extend public utilities and terminals for water storage, light, power, transit, and other purposes until the proposal takes such action. Has been referred to the commission for a report. Notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the municipality may take final action. Approving an appropriation for any proposal prior to the approval of the proposal by the commission pursuant to this section. The failure of the commission to report within thirty five days after the date of official submission of the proposal to a firm report shall be taken as a prover of the proposal. In the case of the disapproval of the proposal by the commission, the reasons therefore shall be recorded and transmitted to the legislative body municipality. A proposal disapproved by the commission shall be adopted by the municipality or in the case of disapproval. Also by the commission subsequent to final action by municipality for an appropriation. For the proposal, then if they're financing with such appropriation. Such final action shall be effective only after the subsequent approval of proposal by a two thirds vote of the town council will want exists. Or a majority vote of those present and voting in an annual or special town meeting. Or a two thirds vote, and this is an A and B, so this is B, a two thirds vote of the representative town meeting or city council or the warden in bridges as is the case fifty. The provisions of this section shall not apply to maintenance or repair of existing property, buildings, or publicways, including without limiting, limited to resurfacing of roads. So last night, um, November second, there was a town meeting on the appropriation. Um, and, uh, there was also a special meeting at the town council on the appropriation. I think last week there was a board of finance meeting, um, to fund the appropriation. So. Um, the special meeting was held at six forty five last night. Um, and the, uh, noticed agenda item was to approve a non budgeted appropriation of one million dollars from the. Uh, fiscal year twenty three general fund on assigned fund balance for the purchase of the real property owned by Rio Vista Associates, I'll see, and Acton Street. As assessors and it gives the map block and lot numbers. Um, so, uh, that vote at the town meeting, uh, was nine to two in favor of the appropriations. Um, I just share that with you. And then, um, when, um, the, uh, town council in their special meeting. They also had, um, a approval, subject to the approval of the board of finance of the appropriation. Um, again, with the same language and that did pass the council as well. Um, I think it was unanimous five to oh. Um, so, um, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Um. There are obviously other pieces to the settlement between the parties. Um, in terms of the administrative appeal concerning the planning and zoning commission. We, uh, the planning and zoning commission in the town, which was, um, an intervening party in the case. Uh, we were successful at the trial court level. So we did win the case in the trial court level. There was a motion to reargue that case filed with the trial court. Um, that has not been acted on. Um, part of the settlement will be to, uh, withdraw with prejudice that motion. And our judgment against Rio Vista Associates will stay. So, um, does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tim.
How did a million dollars come? How would that number come up? Was there appraisal on the property? Was there? Just ballpark to one million dollars or whatever?
So, um, with regard to that, it's not, it's not, I will answer it to the rest of my ability. Um, I, I have been kind of on the outskirts of negotiating the settlement piece. I can tell you because as you know, um, I did do extensive research with regard to what the part of negotiations were. Um, with, uh, the property, the predecessor of interest, um, to the current property owner. Um, there had been previous appraisals. There were two appraisals of the property previously. Um, and obviously you, you know, we're going through revale as well. Um, and, um, so I'm sure that the number was arrived at, um, by virtue of. That information gathering process as well. Um, so I think that that informed the price as well.
I, I'm, my question is that the property was one acre from the one acre zone. That's the one with, when they split it off, they said okay to one acre lots, right?
Yeah.
There are thirteen lots.
Thirteen lots.
Yes.
So we're talking. Under a hundred thousand dollars per lot.
There are thirteen lots. There are thirteen lots.
Okay.
Well.
Well, and it doesn't really concern the referral. Um, you know, the appropriation, um, again, has been acted on by your town meeting, your town council. Um, it, it, you know, it's not really part of what the business is for you tonight. Um, and I am not going to give you my opinion.
Oh, and, and, no, it's not necessary, because even if you, even if it was a full acre, I mean, you can go around town, and if you can find a full acre of property, you can pretty much find out what, not the assessment was, but what would be the selling of that.
I understand what a simple price of acre would be.
Yeah.
Without sort of lines, like if the line's all laterals or anything else that.
Yeah, raw.
So it's raw lots.
Yes, and that's true, but they have frontage, and they're, so, I.
I, so in my opinion, it's twenty, but I, I don't have, have that, I don't have that.
Yeah, Tim, I understand what you're saying, because I think that the price tag is over a million. I'm, I'm not sure, is it at a million?
A million, the appropriation was a million.
Oh.
So, if, if, if they agreed that we're, we're correct on the judgment. Uh, we're not getting anything back from them, or going to court and have to spend that time in court. We're not going to be reimbursed anything from them, uh, for court fees, if we want.
Again, this is far outside the sets.
Yeah.
What you're going to do tonight for an E twenty-four.
Yeah. So what they're doing is.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy if, if you want, if, if you'd like me to, um, it's really not appropriate to add an executive session at this point for tonight. To your agenda, because you're on the end of your agenda, and as you know, you're supposed to do that at the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, I can certainly, um, come back to your next meeting and have a conversation with you, and answer questions that you have.
Well.
With regard to this, um, but it just is not appropriate, we're going way out of the scope of the E twenty-four.
Okay, let me, let me just ask you, let me just ask you this. At this point, what, what this, because now we have the settlement, we have the loss, and everything shut down. But, so now we have the opportunity, it seems, for the town to purchase the property that was in dispute. Now, it's just from a planning perspective, Tim, just standing back, because we gotta leave the real estate aside. We gotta stand back and say, is it worth it for the town to purchase this property? Now, it's on Pistol Creek, and it's on Atkins Road, I believe, whatever. And, um, I mean, it's, it's all wrapped around with a public park. So, to me, for us to keep that Vista clean and just keep it pristine. If, if you're asking for my vote, and I think you are, um, I'm gonna say it's in the positive. Yes, I would love to have legal fees paid for it, yes, I would love to earn, but I can't, it's not within our purview. So, I mean, I think the question before us is, this is an E twenty-four, and the, and we're the last step to, um, blessing the, the transaction. And that's what it comes down to, I think, but Jennifer, am I wrong on that? Am I wrong on that? That feeling of sentiment?
No.
We're just here to, to either bless it, give thumbs up, or the thumbs down.
Yes.
Yeah.
As you, as you would do in any other E twenty-four.
I would agree with Sherwin, really. Um, I would say that I think it's a good idea to acquire that land for the town, never whether it protects it for forever, and we'll never have to worry about, you know, being in a situation like that.
Yeah.
So.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go right ahead.
Uh, I want to ask one more question. Uh, the first purchase of the five, whoever it was, uh, was all on same side of the road. So, I haven't asked that.
But you guys knew about the middle town piece?
Yeah, middle town.
Like, I'm, I'm thinking about the other side of the road, which is some of it's not in the middle town.
I think middle town.
The purchase, middle town purchase, so operating that purchase, something I understood.
Yeah, I mean, we did just, we pulled up the GIS map, and the town line you could see is the dotted line that goes down the screen. Um, the lots are to the left, the, yeah, and all the screens. Um, the top corner lot, I click on that.
Right.
And I believe that's Town of Berlin land already, if that's where you were talking about.
Those are, those are three lots.
Yep, those are the three lots. So those are the town of Berlin lots, according to the GIS, yes?
Okay.
Okay, so those are the lots you have a question?
The very bottom lot below the thirteen lots is not part of what Rio Vista owns, has not been, and at least at one time. It was in, was in, or was it talked about being part of the property that's to the south of the farm? I think there is, there may be a property line in there, I'm not sure if it's all the property or not, but that, I just want to clarify that that's not part of this. Um, so that would be the only other lot, right? Contiguous, right there, that is not, that is not the, uh, town.
Yeah.
Or not, yeah, not the town.
No, but it's a good town. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, because it allows a clear enough now, so everyone understands, but anyway, okay.
That one, and that's in private ownership as well, just that one right there, that's private, behind, to the east, that's to the east, I just want to clarify, it's a big contiguous, as I said, contiguous in that.
Oh, that's a farm. The only thought that I have on this too is, um, if we give our blessing, it does not, at, in fact, um, guarantee that it will be kept in perpetuity undeveloped. It's, we're only giving the blessing for the town to acquire it. Yeah, but we, so, I mean, there's, the discussion is not, um, a recommendation at this point to keep it undeveloped. The recommendation is simply to acquire it.
Other property that's gone through a, a twenty-four, we have.
In money and water.
On the property.
I know.
I understand what you're saying, um, but still, I think if, while that's not a guarantee, I'd rather have it in the hands of the town of Berlin.
I agree.
Well, I agree.
So.
Okay, so, partly, do we need a motion for that? I think we need a motion. Are there any questions?
You have a favorable or positive in the room?
All right.
So.
I'll make the motion, um, for a favorable, uh, recommendation, uh, purchasing the land.
I'll second, okay. Uh, for the discussion, then, all those in favor? I?
All right.
So, okay, that was steamed by all these, do what's thinking up. All right, and do we need anything else here? Hold on.
You, you also have the AMG settlement as well?
Okay.
Can I explain to you?
I think you're gonna need to explain that once.
I don't hear that one, you've got to explain that one.
Okay.
So, AMG Retail One LLC versus the Town of Berlin is a case that's been pending for some time. And the reason why it has been pending is because we're in the property owners of Aaron Bennerup's daughter does, Susan Soiki does reside out of the country. Um, and, uh, there is a proposed settlement between, uh, the property owners and, uh, the appellant, again, uh, AMG Retail One LLC who owns a neighboring property. Um, the underground application that you had approved, that is the subject of the appeal, is a zone change application from R forty-three to BT one. Um, it was filed by him and Chu Patel, um, for the Bennerup Soiki property.
Where, is that right outside?
We're pulling it up.
Okay.
This is the wedge between Orchard and Turnpike.
So it's, so.
Okay. Okay, the one, one that.
Yeah, he kept rezoning it. Yes.
Oh, okay, you guys, I just really wanted to like the future of town.
Oh, I don't know, boy, but.
I said zero, zero.
It was going to be a gas station.
Oh, yeah, it looks like a lot of the Jetsons.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Jetson, the Jetson, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
They wanted to do the, the fancy like features.
Yeah, it wasn't the basis for the lawsuit because of the prep sent in to the other gas station.
Yes, exactly.
So who sued who?
So, AMG Retail, um, again, the neighboring property owner owns a property that has a competing use to what would have been the proposed use, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Um, sued the town as well as Mr. Bennerup and his daughter, Miss Soiki, because they're cool owners of the property, subject property that, um, they were the, and, and also Mr. Patel, because he was the applicant, and they were the owners, so.
I thought Mr. Patel owned the property, that's not.
No, well, it's Mr. Bennerup and Miss Soiki own the property, so.
Mr. Let's help.
Was the one.
He made the application, yeah, but he, he sort of made the, I remember just having the feeling.
I'm sure it was a person, I'm sure it was the contractor by.
I have been asked, so what is, what is this about?
I, so, as far as the map goes, we just clicked a couple of properties to orient you, I'm not sure which property lines that proposal extended to, but I wasn't, you know.
Just.
Yeah, I was active on that application as much, I just don't remember, I think it was the whole wedge, but I'm not totally, uh, I don't want to confirm that.
So, what is this?
But it's that area right where you guys noted it was.
So the settlement that they are entering into, it's not something that needs to be signed by the commission, it's a declaration of a restrictive covenant that will be filed on the land records. And, uh, the grantors are Mr. Bennerup and Miss Soiki, and the grantee, um, is AMG Retail One LLC, again, the appellant and the administrative appeal. And principally, it's going to place restriction on the property, and I will read the paragraph to you. It says, no gasoline filling station as defined in section two B and referred to in section eleven R of the Town of Berlin zoning regulations adopted May nineteen forty-four and read activated by the planning and zoning commission effect this February eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Shall be permitted as a use or constructed upon the property described in Schedule A. So they're agreeing to restrict the use of the property so that there will never in perpetuity, perpetuity be a gasoline filling station on their property.
Okay, so that's.
So it doesn't, it's between them.
Yeah, so why?
And the reason why it's before you is because our rules of practice, you'll, you'll recall, even when I have settled other matters, our rules of practice do require that, uh, you take, um, in public comment on any proposed settlement. Okay, so that's why I'm here, um, I did publish notice of the fact that you were doing this this evening, there was a notice of public comment to be received by the commission, it was published in the newspaper, it was published in the Herald, I believe it was the Saturday before last. Um, and, um, when, our next step, um, is we will have what's known as an E dash Ian hearing before the court. Um, uh, AMG's counsel needs to file a motion to withdraw the appeal, because they're not choosing to file the settlement agreement with a settlement agreement or stipulation judgment of the court, they're just going to file a motion to withdraw the appeal. And the court has to hold a hearing on that too, and I have to publish notice of that. And the court, um, will, uh, take in any comment from any interested person of the public, the public is able to actually participate in that E dash Ian here. So, does that sound familiar? I talked about this before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a good update, I guess.
Yeah, so we're getting, getting rid of that, and.
Well, that's one less motivation, that's good. All right.
Very good.
And, is there anything else for me as an attorney? Every time you come in, it's like, oh, no, that's it.
And like I said, I'm very happy to, you know, I'm happy to do an executive session on Rio Vista and answer questions that you have with regard to it, it just is, you know, we've got to make sure that we're then.
Yeah, I, I think that we, I think we've got a pretty good understanding with the Rio Vista, I think, I, I think a lot of us are very happy, I mean, obviously, there are concerns, but those are normal concerns anytime a town takes over, which is.
Restrictions in this property. That theme of cemetery mall, cemetery.
It's empty.
No, it's a, yeah, it's a hypothetical, yeah, they moved.
No one in there no more?
No, no.
I didn't know they moved, don't know.
We just found that.
I know, we just found out.
Where they go to?
Yeah.
We don't know, they just.
We don't know, they're just lost.
Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, they do, they do have, they're going to, but all the stones are gone, I remember they were vandalized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they were being vandalized?
Yeah, they were vandalized one year.
I would just ask, we don't see anybody online, but let's just make sure there's nobody there.
Okay, and I also just, yeah, I just pulled up the confirmation from the Herald at this one point, and on October twenty-ninth.
So.
I just want to bring that to the record.
All right, so next, next we have.
Or we can, no guessing.
No guessing, we don't know what else is there, but, okay, uh, any plan or comments at this point?
We proved the application.
Or can I say, we're, we're still working on that text amendment thing regarding that hole? Yeah, okay, good, and I'm hoping that that comes up. I know, I know, I know, I know, power comes over the head, and there's one other thing I want to bring up real quick, just to, and I know this is actually your time. But we have a moratorium, uh, excuse the housing development, multifamily, but, and just looking at this agenda today was enough to send people screaming from the room. And I know we cut through it really well, and but the problem is, is that these are all things that are still waiting to explode in our face. So, given that the moratorium is up, I think, end of February, I think it would behoove the commission to extend the moratorium on multifamily to allow Maureen, and for us to catch our breath, still, still to see what happens with the plan of conservation and development, how that's going to impact the town with the growth, and then the demand on new services. And also give us a chance to bring whatever needed staff is on board and bring them up to stop Dylan, who's doing a great job. But I know that we have a zoning officer, hopefully, that we hired, or will hire, or whatever. And so Maureen's still going to be stripped of time to do all of this. So can we put that on to the next agenda or whatever, or do we, can we make a, we can't make a motion on that now?
No, it would have to be.
It goes out to the item on the agenda, okay, yeah.
It's an additional to the group, this commission, no, this, well, it's a, it would have to be a public.
Yeah, well, we're doers of public hearing, and.
However, I'm just, wanna, um, kind of point out, we, our consultant for the plan of conservation and development, and that also worked on the affordable housing plan. Part of the contract with them is to review our zoning regulations, including, um, you know, the, our provisions for housing, and our provisions for, um, the E zone and some other things. So, we haven't had that completed report yet, or you haven't.
Yeah.
Had the, um, uh, analysis and recommendations yet, there's, you know, a lot of work to do.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why everything's available.
And the consultant with regard to that, but just pointing out that that is, um, one of the reasons for the moratorium in the first place.
Yeah.
Adequate still, need time.
Yeah.
You will still need the adequate time to evaluate that.
Can I, let's just say, yes, moratorium, multifamily stuff, uh, if you want. Application, I don't just put a lot of time on, uh, and, uh, that, that, or put out that this other property is bought, uh, for the same purpose. Uh, I want to do that in late.
Well, that's, that's where this, the text amendment I'm referring to.
That's really what.
Has to be reviewed.
And make sure it gets into our.
Reason.
My, my thinking of what it should have been.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah. Of course, a, a lot, lot, lot of things, you know, affects my life, and all the stuff that we discussed with this one.
Exactly.
I don't want another one coming towards without that being readdressed.
Uh, I, I, I agree with you, so I think maybe on the seventeenth, we can put that, uh, can we add it to the seventeenth of November?
A lot of the seventeenth.
No, we'll need enough time to notice it publicly, to write it, notice it.
So you need to, she, you need to guide her in terms of what you're thinking as far as the date is concerned, the date to extend it to, maybe Maureen has a recommendation?
Going to about maybe another six months?
It's in the fall, the term goes to winter.
Of doing, yeah.
The fall term goes to winter.
End of February.
February.
And that's nowhere near enough time, so perhaps we should go to another six months. We can always cancel it, right? And we can always go short.
Again, that was discussed. We also say that you could shorten the timeline at the top of my head without having to discuss it with the consultant. I'm thinking we're confident, as confident as anyone can ever be of the, you know, being at, if not already have completed the plant of conservation and development, being right at that point with another six months because it's due in September.
Okay, well, then.
The timeline to the state is September for the plant of conservation and development. So that puts you well before that than the study should.
In that.
To be able to be looked at and evaluated, so I can be.
We can even go out further, we can, we can maybe suggest eight months.
We can extend it.
Draw a whole year. Or we could do a year in from February and.
Wait a little while, see where we are, or extend it up.
In the um from a conservative standpoint, uh 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 part of, and of the the people who may have something in the books and whatever that they're working on, I think on keeping a target date that is reasonable but not excessive. Um and I, so I'm thinking another six month, you know, you mentioned six months to start with. Um maybe a more reasonable, you know, moratorium is supposed to be used in conservatively. And you know, that should be the the practice, should be using moratorium conservatively, so.
Yeah.
I think that would have, the end result would be a year long moratorium if you did it for that. You posted extra six months, of course, you could say, you know, I can post it as that six months that can be discussed. Or I could post it for longer than that. Yeah.
I think six months is fair, we can always extend it or get it reduced.
That's fine.
Either way.
All right. So that's what we'll do and we'll put it on for December's meeting, I guess. Which is December first, I think it is. We should be all. Yeah, exactly, all right. Um Maureen, did you have anything for us, or Maureen as your?
I do not.
All right.
That I know of.
And that motion?
I may find it on my desk when I get back there.
You know, we're a five week tomorrow.
It's only two weeks ago.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at only thirty-five and a second by Mr. Viella, you got that in here?
You'd better like Chairman.
All those in favor, aye?
Right.
So move. All right, good night, Steve, we'll see you next go round.
Good night, have a good night.